It is Tuesday, September 1st and the planning board meeting will come to order. And the first item is 602 Boxford Street Wellington Way. So what do we, where do we stand on that? That's right, we did here at the last time.
At the last meeting, we had, you were looking for some final sign-off from the different departments. And the Health Department had written a letter that had a statement in it about a three-bedroom quantity for the septic. And the Health Department discussed that with the engineer. They resolved it. And she forwarded a new letter dated 8/1915 that resolves health concerns. Conservation Commission, I sent you a couple of different memos from Conservation Commission. They did have a meeting to draft their order of conditions. They confirmed there are no public trails within a half a mile radius of the open space parcel in existence now. They agreed that trails are worthy amenity for neighbors, but they're unsure about the topography. And they were also unsure about requiring or recommending trails, not knowing what the endangered heritage people would want with the Habitat for the Turtles. Then we got a letter back from the Habitat a few days later saying trails sound interesting, but it takes time and money to plan and construct them. Best of luck. So it's still sort of up in the air. It kind of...
So what does Jennifer think?
Jennifer said it's clear as mud. She said it's, you know, it kind of goes back to the board. They don't have jurisdiction to recommend...
No, they don't have jurisdiction. Just what does she think is a good idea? What does she think we should do?
I think at her meeting, the neighbors from one of the other abutting subdivisions did not want a trail. And the, one of her thoughts also was that when she's been out there in the woods, the area that she did walk that was a trail is kind of the area on the upland where this development is going to occur. The open space that you have is primarily wet, you know. So, and then along with a trail, there was mention of a parking space. And your board didn't seem to favor requiring a parking space in the drive. So it's not connected to any other public trails in the community.
I actually, I drove through Duncan Park, walked around. I'm not exactly sure how we could connect anything up there. I mean, at the, I guess it's either the north or the west. I get those two directions. But at the top of the thing, running roughly parallel to Boxford Street, is Fishbrook. And that kind of cuts off any access coming in from that. Further to the east is Boxford. You know, you've got Boxford Street, so the only way you could connect to another trail is over Duncan. And I had trouble figuring out how it would draw.
Christine, can you put the stuff up? That would probably be helpful though.
Let's see, I'm gonna give you the aerial image. Oops, sorry. First. Oops, that's the wrong one. Sorry about that. Okay. I just want you to see that. It's the parcel and what he's mentioning, the green that you see on the, kind of, I guess to the right, there's, is Brookview. That's the open space owned by the town for the Brookview subdivision. And the wetland portion on kind of the left of this shape is the Boxford one. And it, and there's a piece of it that goes in the back towards the green. And then Duncan Drive curls around to the back. I don't, I just don't think it's labeled Duncan.
That's where it goes up and it dead-ends.
It's a dead end, a cul-de-sac, yeah.
So now can you overlay the open space on this property?
I'll look for a plan set. I have to go back to another meeting to find the plan set. Let's see, what was the last meeting? June 21st? And I'll give you the aerial view here, just for, so you can see that. That's the way it is now. And I'll try and find the plans. I don't think, I can't, I can't overlay them.
Well, let's just look at the plan. I just want to see to the, where the open space is in conjunction to the open space on the other properties.
The PRD application, it'll take me a minute. I'm not sure which is the... I want to pass around two papers.
But I think if you put up the other one, you can see on the...
Before I find out which plan.
No, but I mean, if, if, if the open space on this property isn't even contiguous for the most part to the open space on the other properties, it doesn't buy us a whole lot to do any kind of trails.
Why would, why would Conservation Board ask for it though if there was no connection?
I don't know, do they?
I don't know if they looked at it.
Well, no, they did. They, they sent us the memo from their meeting after reviewing it, so they did look at it.
Did I just cut the impression they were talking about connecting it to something going on on the other side?
Put up the, the map that shows the trees again.
Do you want to see the aerial?
Yeah, the aerial.
Just curious, is someone here for the applicant tonight?
Yes.
There's representation of the applicant. John, is that you?
Yeah.
I think I have a quick solution to this.
I read the letter a little differently, that, but in this case, in concept, I would not anticipate having significant rare species concerns about a minimal width unpaved trail for passive recreation. So it seemed like it wouldn't be a problem if they wanted to put a trail in. So that's what, that's what Natural Heritage wrote. So it, if, would the applicant be opposed if Conservation wanted to go through the process and do, and do all the legwork?
Well, I don't, I don't think so. I think, you know, in terms of the MISA issue, endangered species, it is all priority habitat. And it would essentially require re-permitting, potentially involve MEPA, back-dooring into MEPA if they needed a conservation and management permit for a so-called take of species. So I, I think although this applicant would probably not want to go through that process because he's completed and he wants to get started.
Understandable.
But I guess, I guess if the Conservation Commission wants, wants the right, I mean, I think that they would have the right, but not the obligation to, in those open space areas anyway. So I highly doubt that it would occur though.
There at the lower left-hand corner, which is about the only place that looks like you could have an access trail to it. And it gets pretty soggy because you get about 20 feet in there.
Well, that's what Conservation would do with their filings, is figure out...
They said there is some, somewhat path already there. I mean, that's, everybody's already agreed that there are paths already in there.
I didn't see anything. I did see...
The applicant, the last meeting did confirm that. And Conservation confirmed that there were some pathways, foot traffic. So, I mean...
All I'm saying is that if, I can understand the applicant not wanting to...
Well, who's gonna order the fee in the open space or you donating it to the town?
Well, we have the other three options. I'm not sure if it was resolved yet. I think the easiest and the most efficient way would be to grant it to the town through the Conservation Commission.
So if that's the case, then this is all...
Last meeting, they were saying they were gonna grant it to the new heritage or whatever that is.
Oh, to the state?
Natural, yeah.
Natural heritage of endangered species. That'd be to the Commonwealth.
Yeah. I mean, wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be easier to give it to the town than the Commonwealth?
You'd have to go through the same process. You'd have to go through the conservation restriction process, so...
But the point ends up being, I think you're under the right thing, is if we condition our decision that it will either go to one or the other, and we'll make the decision later, then what that does is the decision, if we ever end up with trails, goes with the Conservation Commission. They can decide on their own if they want to do anything and they have to deal with all the regulatory hurdles to do it.
Right. Under your bylaw, the town does have the right to install trails and to install any, and to allow any activities that are considered passive recreation. So if the town wants to pursue that and undertake that chase, then, you know, there's nothing that we could do to, to halt it.
The last meeting, the presenter said we didn't have a right, just so you know, to install trails into this. That's why we're back here tonight.
It was cranky night, so...
There's certainly nothing under the bylaw that would suggest that you wanna, that, that the board... Obviously, the board can condition what it wants to condition, but there's nothing in the bylaw that requires that we provide trails or access for trails.
So is everybody okay with just, we can make a condition of the decision that the open space will be needed either to the town or to the Commonwealth to be decided? And then, then that'll...
Let them do what they wish.
Okay. Is there anything else anybody wants to talk about related to this one that is still open or not, as the case may be?
I think we still have one item open with the peer review.
Right. The cul-de-sac was resolved. Jean Melissa, he sent you a couple memos that went back. He had one more punch list. The engineer addressed those. And Jean said he was okay with all that and it resolved the cul-de-sac issue.
So what was the cul-de-sac issue?
Elisa Eggleson, your peer reviewer, had said, "I'm satisfactory with the review," except she had a question about the, the way the cul-de-sac was shaped, the curbing. And so the engineer and TPW resolved the curbing to his satisfaction.
And could you read the Health Department note?
This memo is in regards to the application before the planning board for Boxford Street Wellington Woods subdivision plan. The Health Department observed soil testing in January 2015 in preparation for the proposed homes to be built utilizing onsite septic in their design. The soil suitability reports were received as required by the state code. The results of the tests showed that the locations tested could support subsurface disposal systems. There's no risk to public health. As the subdivision will be serviced by municipal water, the Health Department has no comment in this regard.
Anybody have any other questions, comments? If none, do we want to close the public hearing and then vote?
Will we close the public hearing on 602 Boxford Street Wellington Way?
Both the subdivision and the PRD special permit, okay.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let us look at the decision. I always forget which order I go with these things in.
Which goes first? I couldn't figure it out. Christine, just a real dip. Typically on page, on page two, in the findings section A, second line, typically it's spell out A.
I know. Do you like both though? And which one do you put in parentheses? Which do you prefer? The number in parentheses?
I, yeah.
Okay. I've seen it both ways, so that's fine. We'll spell out the word and put the number in parentheses.
I always just spell out.
In the finding of facts, the first one, A, I like that. I'm glad you did that because we have to do that first. But the one comment that I would have towards the end, it's the last sentence. It says, "This PRD plan allows for development of seven single-family homes with reduced lot sizes and increased density in the overall lot." I don't know, I think that increased density in the overall lot is, it could be misinterpreted because it's, it's not. I mean, it's, it's obviously more houses than are there today, but it's not more density than allowed by zoning or more density than they would've gotten under a single family. It's, it almost feels like you should keep that part out and just say, "Development of seven with reduced lot sizes and also allows for the preservation of 66% of the site," so...
I'm sorry, why does it say it will yield eight single-family homes, but then in the next sentence, seven single-family homes?
That's under a conventional plan. So what you, when you do the PRDs, you have to first come up with a conventional plan that allows you how many lots you're allowed to build. And then that's the maximum number when you convert it into a PRD, so...
Should we change to would, that could? I think that might make it clearer.
Because there was saying would yield, but then we're saying seven, so I can see how someone, at first.
It just yields eight houses by rife under...
Right, could yield eight.
Yeah. Yeah, you could make it, yeah. I think in B, you also want to get in the notion that what it does is it minimizes disruption to the land and preserves more of the natural features and topography, which is really the big reason why we do this. I think when you get into the second group of findings, we're getting, there's some conditions that are getting wrapped into there. They're more than just findings. So C is really a condition. It's not a finding. And based on what we just said, we, we want to limit that to either one or the other at our discretion, to either the state or, you know, we don't want there to be a homeowners association, so...
If you don't.
That owns it, yeah. And, but I think, again, you've got to move it to the conditions and take it out of the findings.
And D sort of folds into that, to the thing of C.
Right. These elements are in the, I just pulled them out of the bylaw so that you'd address them. And I, as I noted, I put things in italics when I'm looking for advice from you. You got there tonight to make some decisions on it.
Yeah, D, you're right, Dave should be in there, in the decision part, not in the...
Do you want D in the conditions or the findings?
D has to be in the conditions, yeah. Okay, the, we don't usually specify every single item and how it, in G, how it meets the standards. The, the other thing is you generally want to do the waivers separately. I, I'm trying to remember how we do it, whether we do a special section for waivers before. But go back and look at our other decisions. You, yeah, the waivers we want to put out and do separately.
Do you want that in the conditions?
Well, I think what you need to do is, you need to have a separate section called, look and see how we've done it in the past. But I think we've called out the waivers separately. It's almost a separate section. But I think if you go back to any subdivision that we've done over the last 10 years or any substantial, anything that deals with the circumstance where you can have waivers, it'll show where we put it. I just don't remember off the top of my head where we put it in. But now, what does, I never, ever remembered we were talking about an issue of building height.
This is in the bylaw. Under your special permit section, the, you know, in the, in your bylaw for a PRD, these specifications under 8.5, they're all in there. And when you do that, you have... So it's, like I said, I pulled it right out from the plan.
I don't recall them ever asking for that.
What, the waiver?
Yeah.
It's on their, it's on the front page of their plan set. Yeah. It's right on the, it's right on the front of their plan set, all the waivers that they're asking for. So they have to be listed in your decision.
All right, John, tell us what's going on here.
Well, I'm actually not supposed to be here. It's actually Phil Christensen that you're speaking to right now. Because he's in Oregon, so...
You're a better organ than him, so...
I did want to mention in terms of that requested waiver, a 35-foot waiver, I did look at the bylaws. I just got the draft decision yesterday. I haven't really been involved. But back at the 2013 Annual Town Meeting, the bylaw was amended to provide for a maximum height of 35 feet. So there's no need for that waiver at this time because it is a 35-foot height.
Actually, I think Phil asked for that.
He did. He did. Right, so...
But, I mean, you're gonna be compliant, so you don't need to ask for a waiver, right?
Well, I think the, I think the initial thought was that the building, maximum building height was 30 feet. But actually, the maximum building height is 35 feet, under the bylaw. So I think Phil may have mistakenly thought that it was 30 feet. Because that's what it was until 2013, and the town meeting modified that. So, so there's no need for that waiver.
So again, I think you got to, how many waiver requests are there altogether?
There were two only under the, under the PRD. And I think there were about a half a dozen under the subdivision rigs, which are listed in the separate decision.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, you can go belt suspenders on that because you're right that they're probably, I think generally you're gonna see waivers more with the subdivision than with the PRD. So on the, on the PRD, what, how many, so the height one, go back and shack. The next one is fine. In fact, that's good that we put that in there because it is, you know, but again, I think you've got to pull any of the waivers out. The cul-de-sac length one is probably more appropriate than the subdivision. Okay, the comment on density bonuses, pull that. That's not relevant to the decision. This doesn't feel like there's as many special conditions as we normally have on all of these things. We usually have a lot in our business.
On this one? Well, I think what was happening, what happened is that conditions are there, but the vast majority of them are in the definitive decision.
Yeah.
So they were just, they were just split out instead of duplicating them both.
In special condition one, what's the parenthetical? Why is there a dot, dot, dot?
That's just a date. The applicant showed me all the requirements stated in the definitive subdivision dated, depending on whenever we, you vote and we draft a decision. So that just reminds me that I have to fill that in with the correct date.
This, the thing in italics on special condition three, where did that, where did that come from?
It probably came from another permit, a PRD.
I mean, we don't usually put that type of language.
I think, I think I was, like I said, I was looking at a couple of other decisions from Regency Place and Peachtree, I was using two different decisions to kind of, you know, make sure I was incorporating language, so I think that's probably why I left it in italics, because you had different references in different places. So that can be easily deleted, it was probably just something I was unsure of, but I saw it in another permit.
So the deeds are going to be reviewed through the process?
Decision anyway.
Yeah, I just, I, I don't want to put in our decision exact language on what something's going to look like, because it, it made me to get edited.
Right.
I'm jumping ahead, but I want to ask you a question. On, on the subdivision decision, did you put anything in there related to, if it turns out when the septic systems are actually designed and approved, if it has any material impact on grading, cutting?
They have to come back.
They have to come back.
We can't, that's the kind of stuff you want in a definitive...
Put it in both of them.
Okay.
Because it may impact the, the open space, and it may impact the, the way the water is laid out.
You want that special condition then, if the design of the home and the associated septic system create a substantial change, they must come back before the planning board. If it's, I mean, if the design of the home is, is large, or, and the septic system has to be relocated or enlarged, the project must come back.
Well, I mean, I think you're dealing with sort of two separate things. One is that if the septic system design per se, because the septic system design could be different based on the size of the home, it could be based on the circumstances in the field, it could be based on any number of things, and if it's revised and has any kind of impact on the lording, the drainage, the cutting, any of those things, we want them to come back. There's also an implicit thing is that if there's anything that they do on the site that causes the drainage to change or anything like that, they would have to come back anyway, including, you know, but we don't want to get in the business of reviewing exactly what every house looks like, it's more a materiality threshold, if it changes anything materially, then that's the case.
Under general conditions number four, we want to have that, or shall have the final decision on whether or not there is a substantial change in plans.
Is the formulation in general condition one exactly the same as what we always use? This looks to be a little bit different.
This one is, like I said, this one is different, the majority of what you're used to see, this is in the definitive, this is really just the PRD that talks about, this is a use as a cluster.
No, but my point is, is the PRD about the lapsing of the special permit, this, it feels like the language that's being used here is not the language we've always used in the past.
You'll see all the terms in the definitive, and both decisions go together.
No, 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 I'm asking a different question. We have some very specific language we always put in our special permits, that the lapse after two years.
Oh, oh.
But I don't remember it's written exactly this way, my recollection is our normal language is a little bit different. Maybe I'm wrong, but it looks, it looks a little shorter than I remember it to be.
Is there usually a provision that provides unless otherwise extended?
Prior to the, you know, within 30 days prior to expiration or something, yeah.
Well, I mean, it's, you know, it just looks a little bit different, because maybe this is better, I just am asking you where it came from, so. Does anybody have any more comments?
I think it's shorter too, but I don't remember.
I didn't have time to compare it to the last one, so it seems, doesn't seem, it seems like missing some stuff too.
I think it looks great.
I mean, do we have anything in here in either decision that talks about delineating the limits of work and everything?
Yes, the definitive does. The, many of the regular conditions that you'd normally see are in the definitive.
Okay. Does anybody have any more comments or changes on this one?
I have one last question though, between the board and the applicant, because I wasn't sure about the open space, I did talk with Phil about where the easement in the definitive, how you wanted to word the easement for the stormwater management in the open space parcel, because it depended on who was owning it. If you look on the, the picture I put up on the board, you'll see a large purple retention pond basin, your stormwater management area, and you may have to, they will have a homeowners' association, I'm assuming, to maintain that, but you'll need...
Oh, I don't know, what does the, is that in the decision?
This was kind of, we hadn't discussed this yet at the meeting.
Well, that's, I mean, we could resolve that very easily, and just have a common scheme declarations of easements, restrictions of covenants governing the opera, the management, and the, the operation and the maintenance of those detention areas and stormwater structures. I mean, that's what we've done in the past, and subject to review by town council and the town engineer.
So, let's assume for a second, okay, the, the basic notion is whoever owns the open space, it's the obligation of, the town has access for emergencies, but who actually has the responsibility to maintain it?
That would be either the individual homeowner where the stormwater, the lot owner where the stormwater structure is located.
Yeah, but...
Alternatively, if there's a stormwater structure, yeah, right, right. And with the, since the stormwater structure benefits of lots, then what we would have is, we would write in, into the conservation restriction, a, actually into the homeowners' association and the common scheme declaration, an obligation of the homeowners to maintain that stormwater structure within the open space area. Then with the conservation restriction, what we would do is we'd have a carve-out to allow the homeowners to maintain, subject to the rights of the town to step in, in the event that they aren't maintained.
Okay, so you need to add a condition to the PRD that deals with that circumstance, with the maintenance of that.
Right, well, like I said, until you guys resolved it tonight, I didn't, wasn't sure on where that was going to go.
On open space A, does it make sense to not just have, I mean, it's a little sliver just for stormwater. It's that little open space sliver.
Okay, over here, on this side, it's a little tiny triangle.
I mean, that's, I know it's open space, it's set aside, but this town, town doesn't want it, the state doesn't want it probably either, but can you, can you keep that with the HOA, or?
Well, I don't remember the calculations, that would be a Phil Christensen question, but...
I knew a way over, I'm pretty sure, sixty, something, sixty-six percent.
Sixty-six percent.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I don't know, it just seems...
But there must be a reason that he had, had set it up like that, I just don't know offhand, I don't know if Bob knows.
I mean, the best thing to do would be to...
But see, that's all the swales, so that's what I'm saying, there's no one...
Well, I don't know, I mean, maybe that's a case where the town just keeps that, you know, that's the easiest way to deal with it, it's almost an issue right away or something. Let's keep that as, could you ask him that, we'll, and we'll keep that open as a resolved item? John, you had asked earlier about the lax language, so I did just call up a sample
from March.
Yeah.
And it is, I mean, I don't know if you want to take a look, but it's quite a bit different.
I guess the other question in terms of the open space, I mean, regardless of who owns it, the homeowners' association is going to have the responsibility to maintain it.
I know, that's what I'm saying, that...
Go back with our standard flag.
Yeah.
Which, which one was that one, Peter?
It's granting curbing and...
Not a special.
The drainage swale, so there's nothing else there. So, if they have to maintain it anyways, trying to grant the easement, and post that they just own it, then you don't have to grant back and forth easements probably, but I don't know, I don't really care.
That's reasonable, I, I don't know the rationale why it was structured that way.
I got that, yep.
Especially, it's just, just an example.
Okay, so does anybody have anything else they want to add? If not, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the PRD as amended with the provision that all the changes get sent to the members before filing?
Okay.
I move we approve the PRD, Planned Residential Development Special Permit for Wellington Woods, on the condition that all of the requested changes be made and circulated to the members for approval before finalizing.
Okay, before filing? Okay, motion made to...
Can I still ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
So, I noticed in the next one that we haven't got to yet, that there's a comment on the independent construction monitor, does that need to be in this as well?
It probably should be, there's not, there's no harm in doing balance expenses on these things.
We don't think that the language in the next one is our language, for the, do you know that there's a contract that they have to sign?
Yes.
So we had revised the language a few...
The independent construction monitor form?
Yes, and, and in the next document that we haven't gotten to yet, yeah, it doesn't address that new language about the form, so whatever...
So don't just copy this one and put it in that one.
Yeah, whatever language we add here has to take into account that they have to sign the form.
Both, both of these permits, the first special condition references meeting all the conditions of the other permit, so that they cross-reference one another as their first special condition, just so you know.
We do, you know what, you guys complain about it the whole time.
No, 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 that's a good catch, I mean, I, I'm actually a believer in redundancy on these things. So, motion made, and who seconded? Dave made?
No one yet, second.
Okay, Lynn seconded? All favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's move on.
How will these be circulated, and how will we?
I will forward them out once they're edited.
Okay.
To the board, and to confirm, and you can send back, if you have a final type, you know, something that you find, send that back to me, and I'll make a final, and then I'll send out, you know, a final, depending on what I receive back for any clerical errors that are missed.
Is, moving on to the subdivision, is definitive planned residential development subdivision a defined term? Is that, is the heading of definitive planned residential development PRD subdivision, is that a defined term?
Definitive PRD, or do you just want it to be definitive?
Well, it's, yeah, I'm asking, is it, is it, can you find any of that term, that exact wording anywhere specifically in the, in the bylaw?
I think it is, but I think it was just a reference to...
PRD being involved as part of the...
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, again, it just, it's a little bit different terminology than we're used to.
If you want, you can, it just depends, you can reference it or not. Do you just want it to be definitive, and then...
Well, you ought to look to see the last time we did a PRD, however we did it the last time, it doesn't matter, you can keep it, but it just, we're putting everything in, I've been doing too many contracts lately, and, right, Laura, when you capitalize something, it means something.
Terms are everything.
Yeah, that's, that's what I learned, if you, if you capitalize it, it has a definition.
Or a comma somewhere.
So what, what I'm seeing in there is planned residential development, but not definitive planned.
We can just take it out, it could just be the definitive subdivision for that address, if you like.
So under findings, D, I don't get it, D, reduces danger to life and limb? Oh, I thought we were on the next one. Is that our, is that our language?
Back to the letters, before we get, just before the thing, in findings, I don't think governing should be capitalized.
Which one, which letter?
The G in governing.
G in governing.
North Andover Rules and Regulations capitalized, but then governing.
Yeah, we have to call it a final plan, by the way, in our bylaw, not definitive.
Well, it's, yeah, it's, yeah, but definitive is, it's actually a thing to leave in terms, so that's, that's okay.
But D, I think we have to change that line, I don't think that's our normal line.
It's actually, it's in your subdivision rules and regs under letter D, on your decision. It reads, for reducing danger to life and limb in the operation of motor vehicles.
Yeah, I, I'm trying to think, we, we don't want subdivision, we haven't done very many subdivisions over the last five years, but I don't, well, no, I, I don't recollect that we've, we cross-referenced the rules and regulations for that, which is actually probably not a bad idea, but I'm, I'm just...
It's fine, it's just very dramatic.
Very dramatic.
What's that?
Life and limb.
D, read D, it's very dramatic.
So, I have a question about H. Under findings, I'm just not sure what we mean by coordinate the ways.
This was another one that was, it's, it's in your listing, and I, I, you feel compelled to, you know, at least address all the elements that are in your rules and regs, this one doesn't connect particularly to, I'm sure some subdivisions connect to other neighboring ways, or they leave the cul-de-sac an opportunity with an easement to connect, this one doesn't detract from any of your neighboring ways, the open space connects.
We need to strike it, it's not, doesn't apply.
If you don't want to address it.
Yeah, it doesn't apply. Back on G, street lighting, there is no street lighting, correct? Is there street lighting, 700 feet, why not?
No, that's a waiver on the next thing.
Yeah, okay, so on G, take out street lighting? And on G, take out sewer too.
It's provision for sewage.
They're putting in septic.
Yeah, but that's sewage.
The language of the subdivision regulations state that the board shall make findings, the following findings, A through J, so, choose to ignore them, but if they don't apply, you might say as applicable, as, you know, if applicable.
If you would like the language on letter G, Lynn, you mentioned instead of sewage, you could say sewage... you could say sewage treatment via septic systems, if you want to reference that they're actually septic. Is that better?
Yeah.
By the way, when we get into the waivers, I, I don't want to forget this one, but the sidewalk one, a contribution to the sidewalk fund is in order, so you need to put that in.
DPW is determined an amount already for them, so...
So, the other thing is that I, again, you got to go back and look, but it says, upon reaching the findings is based on the following special conditions, and you jump right into the permit definitions and the waivers, which aren't special conditions. I think the way we typically do them is we do the permit definitions and waivers before we jump into the special conditions. Well, the street trees, is the DPW okay with the street trees outside of the public way?
I mean, they've proofed everything, but I will check with G.
I think on the, in the less intrusive roadway design, I think they should add in something about the low-impact development, because most of those waivers are based on that.
Would you like the findings or the condition that projects...
Well, under two, right before we go into the waivers.
Special condition two, okay. Do you want that incorporated in there?
Yes, so that way, that's the reason, that's the main portion of the reason why we're giving these waivers.
For half of them. LID, number two, any particular language that you want to recommend?
Yes, instead of the, the less intrusive roadway design, I think we should put in low-impact.
Low-impact element?
Yeah.
Turns to the number, Christine, you've got five with nothing after it.
Which one?
Why are we doing this? Please, why are we doing this? Because of the turtles?
No, no, no.
Because it's out in country, much of our country.
Is it number five?
That's five whale.
Oh, yeah. It's having the swales, actually, it gets the water back, instead of the stormwater catch basins going into our treatment centers, it's actually now filtering the water and getting it back in the aquifers faster, so it's a much better design.
The other comment, I don't know if we've had this before, but all existing trees that are noted on the plan, to remain will be maintained in perpetuity? I mean, is that for, like, forever?
Which thing are you referring to?
Number seven.
Well, that's what we, what we do, obviously, we, we want to ensure that they get replaced, so, be that as it may. The, still on the waivers, these two at the beginning of the page, F and G, did they actually ask for these as waivers?
Yes, anything I entered in was on the front of the plan set.
Is that really, F really true?
Section five.
I mean, why would we base things on a 1929 thing? Where does that come from?
The subdivision regs.
Is it? Oh, we got old subdivision regs then, I guess. And the, the one on the monuments, why are they, what's the logic on that?
Six point twelve, I'm just going to check.
How many of them are being waived away versus, I mean, and have we ever done that before?
What did he ask for, where you make concrete?
I don't know, I mean, what's, you know, that doesn't have anything to do with any of the other stuff, it just is what it is, and, I mean, the other ones intuitively make sense for one reason or the other, but it's not clear to me why this one, why should we give this one?
The monuments?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm looking at it, and I know I looked at this recently with another subdivision, I think the language, monuments shall be four feet long, six inch square, concrete or granite, and they shall be installed at all street intersections, at all points of change in direction or curvature of streets, at two property corners of all new lots, and any other points where, in the opinion of the board, permanent monuments are necessary. And then, a few categories down, it said, the monuments shall be standard granite, and the previous one says concrete or granite, so there's a few things that are a little confusing in your subdivision language, and I suspect he's just addressing that in his waiver.
What, he changed his size?
And there's a size, and one of them requires a certain size, and then other one gives him flexibility, so I think perhaps he put it in there as a waiver request so that he could put in what he was specifically proposing to do.
I assume what monuments would be curves?
No. No, it's a corner, it's a little corner block of granite that marks, marks the new lot.
Oh, okay. I think that the six to the five is the standard sizes, they downsized them.
Oh, four, four inches.
Four feet long, but I don't know. See, that, it is on there, but they're looking for six, they're changing it to five, so instead of a six.
Were they in all the same spots? I, I, I mean, on one level, it's not a big deal, it's another level, what's the logic of it? If there's a flaw in our rules and regulations, then we ought to change it.
Yes.
I mean, what is, what have we done in the past? I, this is one, frankly, I'll admit, I have no idea, it's fallen below the radar screen as far as I go, but, I don't know, I mean, does, does DPW care? Is this going to create any problem for them? Is it, if, if, if they're...
I will double-check the waiver with DPW again, I mean, they've reviewed the materials, both DPW and Tim Willett, when they review and sign off on this, but being that it's a public, it's a street, they're planning on having publicly accept it, I can double-check that waiver for you.
I think there's two points, is, is one is why they want it downsized from a six inch square to a five inch square, so we can find out if there's reasoning to that?
I just spoke, the reason why these are specified this way is because you cannot buy the bounds the way they're specified in the subdivision regs?
So we had to fix the subdivision.
Yeah. That's right.
So that's the only reason why.
That's what it is, yeah.
Okay.
So a standard is now a five inch, not a six inch, and so you can't buy them unless you custom-make them, which is astronomical, so.
Okay, then we're probably okay with that, so. The item H there, I think that was the one on height you were going to check, because it may not require a waiver. And J, I, when the length of the dead-end street, I would like a, if you could expand and give an explanation why, because it's, it's marginally over, and we're getting public benefit in return with the preservation of open space and, you know, a bunch of other things, and, you know, because what happens is people will say, well, you granted a waiver before, you know, so that gives you the right to, you know, an unlimited waiver, and I, the waiver request has to be in context with overall scheme of what we're trying to do.
Just curious, it's 724 feet and 8.87, if they're three one-hundredths of an inch over, they can't do it. Can't we, can't we just round up to 725? I mean, technically...
Doesn't that make you feel good that it's that precise?
No, I mean, they can't filter the, construct, road construction that three one-hundredths of an inch?
Right. I always laugh when people are overly precise with things that you can't measure, but that's...
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, that they get so precise on it, it's impossible to do it.
Item number four in this list is the one that we talked about, and, well, let's see, infiltration, no, we didn't talk about that, that's the common, the, let's look at the plan here, is...
This, this plan doesn't show it, but I believe lot three, four, and five do each have a retention pond on the individual lot.
So does the town, if it's critical for the draining, does the town need an easement to access that?
No, those ones, the homeowner will be required to maintain their individual, the structure on their lot.
But what if it doesn't happen? It's been rumored to have been the case in the past. I, I guess what I'm, I'm more trying to figure out what the impact would be, is if they didn't maintain it, how big a problem would they be?
There'd be some flow which would go backward into the...
Is there neighbors left?
If I could mention on those three lots, I mean, what we'd do is impose an individual restriction that requires that homeowner to maintain each, their individual ponds, and then, we have no objection in the common scheme declaration to give the town the right, but not the obligation to come and maintain, that's not an issue at all, I mean, that's what we've done in the past, so, so...
Now, here, couldn't we have the homeowners' association, we could use number five to have a homeowners' association responsible for maintaining any of the, the ponds that are located in the common area, down by, down by at the end, that thing we talked about Because we're identifying what we're doing with the infiltration basins, but we're not doing anything with what's down there near Boxford Street.
Okay, item number eight, the...
You didn't like my idea?
What's that?
You didn't like it?
No, I'm still thinking about it, go ahead, can you say it again? I'm, I'm doing two things at once, I'm sorry.
Well, item four talks about maintaining the infiltration basin and ponds on the lots, but we had talked earlier, what about that area that's down by Boxford Street, right at the end of the cul-de-sac road?
Which one, the big one?
Yeah.
That's three, isn't it? That's condition number three. So, in special condition eight, and I forgot if somebody mentioned this, that discretion Now, item number 10, and the special conditions, I don't get what that means, how can we do all the requirements prior to the endorsement of the plan? You don't typically wait till the very end. I, I'm just not sure what 10 is meant to do.
10 was that cross-reference to the PRD special permit, and I think I put them both in the same place prior to endorsement of plans, but it, if you feel like it can go in a different location, I just wanted to put them in the same spot.
I mean, what you want to say is, you want to say that they have to comply with all of those decisions, but you can't, I don't think... You need to comply with all those things prior to the endorsement of the plans.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
Back on eight, wanted to add that language, the planning board shall have the final decision on substantial changes, on determining if the changes were substantial, whatever language I had given you before we were going to put in all of them.
Okay, and 1A, it's, you have to cross-reference the specific condition, which one is it supposed to be?
Oh, where is it?
It's blank.
Did we propose a security bond? Was that your site opening bond, or your performance guarantee?
I don't know, I, I don't know which thing you're referring to. To me, item number one D, is this one of our standard conditions?
This is the one we used in Regency Place, I think. If not, I mean...
Well, I don't know, go back and look, I don't ever remember recording the, recorded deed, because you're not going to record the deeds for each lot, I think, prior to the endorsement of the plan.
I think maybe what you're looking at, is there a review of a form of deed?
Maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, because you wouldn't, you wouldn't record it and then review it.
Yeah.
Be in the wrong order.
Well, there should just be one form that's agreed upon, right?
Well, actually, there may be differences because of the different detention areas, and so on.
So a proposed deed, a proposed deed shall be...
Yeah, I, it's almost like, I, I, just go back to our, I mean, we have a template that works, and, you know, it's, you can modify off the template, but it feels like the template's gone.
On G, the 10-foot drainage easement, where'd that number come from? Is that...
The plans.
The plans, okay.
Back to...
Just wondering if 10 feet was enough?
F, do you mean to say that the stormwater management easement for parcel B should go to the homeowners' association?
And like I said, I put this in there not knowing... And, like I said, I put this in there not knowing how that would end up, so...
Right, so it'll go to whoever, shouldn't it be for A and B?
What's that?
Should that be for A and B?
Parcel A and B, correct.
And, I know it's a silly question, but who would the easement, who would you provide the easement to? Is it the town, or the, or don't we say that?
I thought the town was owning it, but we're providing an easement to the homeowners' association, because we're saying they need to maintain it.
Yeah, we're not going to provide that, we're going to, that's going to change to whoever has ownership of those open spaces.
Are you saying that whoever owns the open...
No, the, if they've stuff that's on, in the common open space, it's got to be the homeowners' association, yeah.
Regardless.
The, this 10-foot drainage easement, how's that different from the easement documents in H?
The 10-foot drainage easement is specifically for the town to work on the roadway.
Won't it be one of the easement documents, I mean, how many easements are we looking for in this thing? And, do we know for sure that DPW is fine with the 10-foot easement?
He'll, yes, I mean, that's, like I said, he's, he's reviewed these plans, if you want that confirmed, that can be confirmed, but it's listed on the plan.
Well, as long as you're okay, it's just that if, it sounds like when you say a 10-foot drainage easement, it's something that's not already in the plans, it's, it's additional, because you're saying eight 10-foot, it's, is, you know, somehow, if it's something that's already in plans, then reference the plans where, where it is, because otherwise, I think it's, I read that as that's something incremental to what, it's already in the plans.
It's right there, it is in the plans. It is in the plans, I think I just wanted to make sure we called out that it was for the town to maintain the road.
Is it in the right-of-way, or is it out of the right-of-way?
It's next, it goes around the right-of-way.
It's in the right-of-way.
Follows it around, it's this red line.
So, it's out of the right-of-way, is it, or no, is it?
I would think it's, it's 24, so it's in the right-of-way.
Well, if it's in the right-of-way, then we don't need an easement, we already own it, we're going to own it. So, I, again, just, I think the easiest way to do it is to tie the things to however many easements we think we need, specify all of them, and make sure they're all approved prior to, to the endorsement of the plan. Why are we, what does K, that feels like it's a consultant thing, what, I mean, if, if we want that, it's, isn't it moot at this point, because we've already signed off on the thing, what are, what are we trying to do with K? Because we already know that they've demonstrated that, right? If something you want is not there, we typically, they should just update the plans and, for that, but we, you know, you know, I don't mind to keep track, but it just, it's the kind of thing we want, we don't want to put in a decision.
Are they already noted on the plan?
Yes, the test pits are noted on the plan.
So, if they're already noted on the plan, we should take it out?
Okay.
The item R, I'm not sure that that's something that necessarily is prior to the endorsement of the plan, but if, I think you need to stay it a little bit more strongly, because if, in fact, the changes are material, we, we may, they may have to file modifications.
I think this is where that it was going to reference the Board of Health in particular, that if as a result of any decision by another board in particular, you had that concern about the Board of Health review.
Right, well, yeah, but I'd rather have something separate, specifically in the general conditions, to address that, but they, the, the thing about it is, is they have to submit it to the planning board, and the planning board has to designate whether it's, the changes material or not, and may require a, a modification. Again, I think we have standard language for this.
I, I think we have that on modification, for sure. On M, have we ever put M in, the actual, referencing the actual my lines? M.
Yeah.
I think, I think you have, like I said, these, I pulled these from a couple of them, so, and they usually, they are typed in, so...
Okay, I just, I don't remember seeing one. And again, P, you know, we have, that has to be changed.
I'll find it later.
For the form. Might have that changed? There's another... We found that independent construction monitor are hired by the applicant, but we want them to sign off on a form, basically, so we got a lot of queries on whether or not they were actually... Really independent? Yes.
They're hired by the applicant.
Yes, their respo, their role and responsibility to the town when they're doing the monitoring. So, are they hiring them, or... We're not hiring them, but they have to tell, they find something wrong, they have to inform us, and, basically, and we want them to acknowledge that.
So, that letter sampled for March on 1046 has the language on signing the form.
Basically saying if they don't, they get in trouble, we can tell if they can't do any of these projects.
Makes sense.
Because, I didn't know that, I didn't know that they came to us, and they already did work with issues, you know?
Dig safe?
Yeah.
Okay, in which section, John?
In the general conditions. Oh, you did, it's in there, it's number one, never mind, sorry about that.
Site screening and street trees on, under lot release, wouldn't they want to do that after the lots were released?
No, 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 it, the bond includes that, it's just the...
Oh, okay, okay.
Things in the bond, yeah.
But then it's on, but it's under the heading, prior to any lots being released.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, you have to apply the performance guarantee, it's the performance guarantee. In other words, we're not going to, we, we did this before, remember, on the other one, so I think it's fine.
Christine, Laura and I have been discussing a comment.
What, what page?
Eight, item three.
The lot, so...
All lots...
All lots must be raked, loomed, and seeded or sodded, period. If the weather does not permit seeding or sodding, then they shall be mulched.
I put a copy there, that things sort of get separated.
I was, I can second you.
Just as a formatting question, you know, to go back to John's earlier comment about the template, when, and this thing from March is not a special example, it's just one that I pulled up, but one of the things we had was sequential numbering, and I think at a board meeting like last winter, that was a change that we all thought, geez, this sequential numbering is good, because we can just go to the paragraph.
Yeah.
You know, there aren't, in other words, there aren't six paragraph threes, it's one through...
One through the whole document.
Forty-four, or whatever, is that something that we want to go back to?
Yeah, thanks again, we ought to presume that our model works unless we change it.
Well, and I also think, I mean, don't we usually have a page number somewhere?
It is, with the staples.
Oh, it's in there?
Yeah.
Because I, I did this on a, the town, the town letterhead now has the address on the bottom, so I didn't get into the footer with the page number, it was just...
Yeah, that's a change.
You should put it on the bottom again, though. Regardless of where the town letterhead wants it, it can go in the bottom right.
Okay, we all approve, I think if so, the same condition is that we recommend, you make a motion to approve subject conditions and pending review by the board before filing.
Circulated trust, right?
Yes, circulated and...
Circulated, yeah, so would you like to make that motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Okay, Laura?
Second.
Motion made in seconded, to approve based on these conditions, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Is this the same one they have, September 1st, yes, or is it something else? Is this a full application, or? Okay, great, I will distribute that after. John, do you want to hold on to this, it's a memo he drafted today, it's just one for the board, I will copy and produce it for the...
I don't need to have it, you can't all say it, yeah, but, let the record show that we just received a, how many page memo?
There's several pieces of it, 11 plus a cover letter.
Just now, for the first time.
Although it's, it's a couple of things, maybe 20 pages, yes.
Okay, let us get started, we'll let the applicant speak first, and we'll find out what's going on here.
Great, thank you very much, good evening, Mr. Chair members of the board, we are back in on our application for a six-megawatt solar generation facility, that was before this board, let's see, in April, in May, in June, in July, and last on August 18th. Previously, the last time I was present...
Can, but, can you identify yourself in the record of this?
Sure, Attorney Michael Rosen. The last time I was present, which was the hearing on June 16th, we discussed the fact that this matter was also going in front of the zoning board of appeals, based on a determination letter written by the town's building inspector. We did, in fact, appeal those determinations, we requested five findings from the zoning board of appeals, and we held our final hearing last Tuesday night, at which point those findings were ruled upon favorably by the zoning board of appeals. So, at this point, we believe we have the determinations that this board was waiting for from the zoning board of...
Has the zoning board filed their decision yet?
They have not, they have until a week from today to file their decision.
So, we do not have their decision?
No, you have a letter from them confirming that they approved the finding request.
That they approved, but we don't have their decision?
That is correct.
Okay.
So, I really think the hearing tonight has two components to it, one is the legal merits of the case, and then the other is the technical merits of the case, so what I'd like to do is go through the legal merits of the case first, and then, when I'm done, I would hand off to our technical staff, who would then go through the technical merits of the plan.
What is your intent, what do you hope to achieve by this tonight, do you, in your view, is this going to be the hearing, full stop tonight, or is this... Or is this just the start of what is the normal planning board process?
I would hope that we could get through the whole thing tonight, but I would also understand that your prior hearing took an hour and a half.
No, no, that's, that doesn't have anything to do with it, whether it took an hour and a half or not. The question becomes, the decision has not been filed. So if the decision includes conditions, they've not yet been reflected in the plan because you don't know for sure what they said until they've written it down. So how, how can we hear something where we don't even have the final set of plans? How can we hear something if our consultant hasn't looked at it yet, as we normally do when these sorts of things? I just, it's, the process is starting now. And to think that we're going to get through the process tonight when we've had, haven't had a, we don't even have your updated plans.
Actually, I believe you do have the updated plans.
How can they be updated if you don't even have a written decision yet? How do you know what they said?
Because I stayed for the deliberation and there were no conditions.
There were no conditions?
There were no conditions.
Then what's taken them so long to write the decision?
I do not know. They have fourteen days to write it and file it. It's been seven days.
I have heard that there were conditions, so that's, but.
I guess in a few parts that there were conditions.
Partly it's, I want to set reasonable expectations in terms of how long you're going to give us to file this decision and whether you're going to try to back us into a corner on this thing or not. And before we get into the merits of the thing, we've got to have that discussion.
Well, then I think you're going exactly where I want to go, which is discuss the legal elements of this matter first and then get into the presentation as to the actual project specifics second.
Okay. Well, we'll see. Let's, let's have the discussion.
Okay. So the first question I have is, what is it that we're in front of this board for? Whether it's a special permit or a plan approval. One of the findings that we requested from the zoning board of appeals is a determination that in fact it is a plan approval and not a special permit. So for that reason, I think that I would like to have that discussion unless this board concurs that it is a plan approval. And then I would also like to try and determine whether or not it's a vote of five, a four out of five or a majority vote in order to get the approval that we're seeking. So if you'd like, I can brief you on why I think this is a plan approval and not a special permit.
You can make that argument, but we're not going to take a vote on that tonight. Why, why would we? We don't even have the written decision yet. And it's not through the appeal process. And you, it seems presumptuous on your part to demand that we take a vote on something that, you know.
I'm sorry, with all due respect, I don't think I demanded you take a vote on anything. I asked that we discuss it.
It sounded like you wanted us to take a vote. That's what I was going to say.
Didn't ask you to take a vote on anything. I'm ready to open the discussion. I asked you if you would like me to present. That's all I asked.
Okay.
It seems like you have a predisposition that you're thinking that I'm asking for something that I'm not, and I'm not.
All right, well, let's, then let's go through.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. So. If you guys would like me to present, I'm happy to present. I can tell you where we stand on the legal elements of the particular matter. I think town council's here. I briefed town council on what my position is as to the legal matter. I'd like to talk about it. That's all that I asked. Okay. Your bylaw has special permit, your bylaw has as of right approval. Under seventeen point six point three point two, we qualify as an as of right approval, which includes light manufacturing, which specifically includes solar generating facilities. The determination from the zoning board of appeals has confirmed that. Under seventeen point six point three point three, you have a provision called special permit approvals. We applied under seventeen point six point three point two, and we continue to be moving forward under seventeen point six point three point two. So one of the issues is, under seventeen point six point three point two, we are looking for a determination that in fact we're seeking plan approval, not a special permit. Under Massachusetts law, there is a distinction between plan approval and special permits. Special permits are a creature of statute. They fall under Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-eight, Section Nine. Special permits under Section Nine have a specific meaning relating to use and based upon authority vested in particular boards gives those boards the right to determine whether or not a use should be allowed as distinguished from the actual elements of a plan or a project which are being presented before a board. The courts in Massachusetts are very clear that a, a plan approval is not a special permit. What I've done is I've provided materials from the Citizens Planning Training Collaborative, which is a Massachusetts nonprofit organization that trains and provides technical assistance and guidance to planning boards, zoning officials, and local public officials as to planning and planning decisions. So as a matter of law, under Massachusetts law, Forty-eight, Section Nine is what allows special permits. It's statutory. What allows plan approval or site plan approval is a matter of common law that is derived over the years through the courts. And the courts have specifically held that there is a distinct difference between special permit and plan approval. One of the reasons that it's critical for us is we believe that there's a difference in the vote that's required. We believe that a special permit requires a vote of four. We believe a plan approval requires a majority vote. So from our mind, it is important to discuss the legal element of the case upfront so that we know what type of permit or approval we're actually seeking and applying for. There are other distinctions and differences between special permits and plan approvals. Special permits require sixty-five days to open the hearing, and then there's no deadline on closing the hearing, and then a decision has to be rendered within ninety days of the close of the hearing. However, plan approvals do not have that requirement. There is no legal requirement for plan approvals unless the bylaw specifically sets one up. In this particular instance, we're applying under Forty-R, and under your bylaw for a plan approval under Forty-R, it is a hundred and twenty days from application to decision. Again, another reason why it is distinctly important to determine whether we are here for a special permit or a plan approval. And then certainly last, but by no means least, one of the critical distinctions is that essentially special permits give a board the right to deny a use, whereas plan approvals do not give the boards the same right to deny a use. The standards, again, are set out in a legal memorandum that I've submitted, and that detail that in fact only in the most extreme and rarest of circumstances is a plan approval intended to be used to deny a use at a particular site.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
I recognize a hundred and twenty day point, but how does the fact that you guys asked for continuances of at least two months, I mean, probably close to two months?
Sure, sure.
Doesn't that extend the hundred and twenty days?
Yes, it does. We're not on a hundred and twenty days. We're beyond a hundred and twenty days. As of right now, you currently have signed in in your files a consent from us to extend till September 16th. Right now. We would consider going beyond that if it's needed.
That's for us to issue a decision.
Yes. So we were in here in June. Let me, I'll give you the exact date. And I actually have gone back and I have watched the hearing from that night in June a number of times. The hearing was on June 16th. At that time, there had been two continuations. One, because we requested a withdrawal, and you sought the advice of council before deciding whether to approve or deny our withdrawal. The second time, you continued the hearing. I don't believe there was a quorum when we were present the second time. So that's what got us to the June hearing. In the June hearing, we actually counted out how many days we were in, and we counted out that we were roughly ninety days in. And at that hearing, we had a discussion about the fact that why don't we stay this particular venue until the zoning board of appeals issues a decision? At that time, I had asked and offered that we would stay for the exact number of days it takes the zoning board of appeals to render their decision, and we would then tack on time at the end that would compensate for the lost time. So my theory was we had thirty days left under the hundred and twenty days. We would stop the clock. We would allow the zoning board to do their job, and then when they were done, we would start the clock again. When I made that suggestion, this board said no. It would be too difficult to draft that. And instead, they said, we would like you back here every month, and we will extend a month at a time each time. We said, okay, if that's what you would like us to do, we're happy to do it. And we did. And we filed an extension in June that took us into July. We filed an extension in July that took us in August. We filed an extension in August that took us into September. I apologize, I was not here on August 18th at your last meeting. I was on vacation with my son. I was out of the country. I wish I could have been here, and I apologize. No offense was intended. We presumed we were doing what you had specifically requested in the June meeting, which was push this out a month at a time, which is verbatim what you asked us to do at the meeting, and that's what we did. Again, no disrespect intended. The goal was not to put a gun to anybody's head to make the decision. The goal was to come back in here as soon as we knew that the zoning board was going to hold their hearing, to then set forth some of the parameters to get something done with the planning board. We explained in that June hearing that one of the reasons that we're being so anxious is because solar and the right to connect to solar is limited under state law. You have to get a place in line. You have to hold your place in line. There is a queue, and if you don't meet deadlines and a deadline comes up and you're, and you haven't met certain requirements, you lose your place in the queue, which could be permanent or it could be temporary, depending on what the state does with solar racks and net metering credits going forward. So we're not trying to be confrontational. We're trying to move this as quickly as we can, but we also recognize that this board will need the time to deliberate, review, digest the materials we submitted. That's why in advance of this hearing, we already granted the extension or issued it. You guys have to accept it to extend till September 16th. And in it, we also indicated that we would be more than happy to discuss tonight the need for a further extension if the board felt it was appropriate. So we're not, again, to answer your question, you have another extension. It's till the 16th, and we're happy to discuss something further, but we kind of, we need to have an understanding of what we're doing. If it's, if it's a Forty-R and we're on a hundred and twenty day clock, we work off of that. If it's a special permit under Forty-eight, Section Nine, we're looking at a different clock. Okay, you're welcome. So I don't know if that's an appropriate time to kind of maybe take a break on that element of it and discuss it, maybe get some guidance from town council. Again, because the timing really is essential. It's also important for us to give you the appropriate amount of time that you need, and it's also important to know what we need for a vote, whether we need the majority or whether we need four out of five.
Understand what you're saying, and I, I think from our perspective, we try, although it may not appear this way, to treat anybody that comes in front of this board exactly the same. And we're no tougher or easier on anybody. We try to apply it even standard. To people, we understand your overall set of circumstances. You would acknowledge that these are somewhat more unusual than normal circumstances in terms of navigating our way through them, and we're trying to do it in a way that we think is appropriate to protect the town's interests, to comply with the law, and to do the job that we're chartered to do. So that's really our objective in this. I think to answer your question, we would want to specifically about how to interpret it, we would, I would prefer to, I think there's an element of this where we would privately want to talk to council about and not necessarily make a determination of that here tonight. That was my point about being put on the spot because we haven't even had a chance to, to read the decision of the ZPA and why they decided the way they did. And, you know, we'd like all that information before we make a final decision where, I think is, from a belt and suspenders point of view, you know, we'd like to continue to think, oh, but if we go down that path, we clearly have the ability to render a decision within a timeframe so that we're, we're not going to miss a deadline if, if we choose in the end to, based on council and our internal deliberation, to go down that way. We will, but, you know, I don't think we're ready to make that determination tonight.
Well, again, as I previously indicated, we've already put an extension in the file till the 16th, and again, depending on what we discuss tonight, I mean, I think one of the issues really was, under Forty-R, it's one type of deadline. Under Forty-A, it's a completely different type of deadline. And so that's kind of, even discussing the deadline makes it difficult.
Well, yeah, but I think it's, it's probably more complex than that because you, you filed under one provision and not the other. So we even need advice on that. So from council, I'd rather do that. I mean, if you get at the substantive nature of the process, what we would, as we said, is our normal process, the way we deal with any development application, is to, to take the set of plans that are current based on what any other word said or any other externally imposed requirement and take those set of plans and review them and give them, including giving them to our consultant to review, our peer review consultant, and to get back the, the answers from that individual. And the problem is, we're, if, the decision hasn't been filed yet, so we don't really have the final plans. We give them our consultant, we get them back, they raise some questions and some issues. It's an iterative process. There's no way we can do that by next meeting. And I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult about that, but that's just the fact of the matter, how long our process takes.
We would be willing to take the risk that nothing comes out of the zoning board of appeals that would change the current version of the plans, and understand that if we sent the plans to peer review now and we had to change it based on the decision, that would be at our risk, cost, and expense. But because the timing is so critical to us, I guess the first thing I would ask is, can we get this to peer review? And can we do it now? And we believe we have the final set of plans in front of you.
I mean, I don't know what people think.
Well, I mean, you say at your cost and your expense, but suppose the peer review says, well, there's a few things we've got to do, and we can't make a decision on the 16th.
Well, that, I, my comment, my comment was geared towards, let's not wait for next Tuesday till the zoning board issues their written decision, and then twenty days for the appeal period after that. We're willing to start the peer review process now based on the plans that you have in front of you. That will effectively save us twenty-seven days. So my comment is, can we save the twenty-seven days and start peer review?
I mean, just frankly, my opinion, I would find it difficult to make a decision based on the two-week interval between now and the 16th. The 15th, I think, is when we have our next meeting.
Understood. Okay. And the whole reason I wanted to start with the process part of it is, I want, if you want another extension, I kind of want to have a good idea of when it's got to go till.
I didn't want any of the extensions.
Right. I don't, we don't want to lose our place in the net metering queue, and that is what we presented to you in June. I thought what I had offered in June was a fair and reasonable compromise. The board didn't want it. You wanted us to come back every month, which we've done.
Actually, no, I think we, until like November, you didn't want to give us. If you were to go back and look at.
I guess I hope what you're, you're gleaning out of this is, I want to work with you, but we also have to have some controls in the timeframe on this. We have to, because if we lose our place, we're done. And that, that doesn't work either. We have our place now, yes.
See, one of the things, this is a small symbolic thing, and I don't even know if you realize that it's the kind of thing that puts us in an impossible box, and it's, it's a perfectly good explanation if you think about the ZPA, is you want us to make a decision on one night and then have the decision filed by the next day. And I tell you right now, that cannot happen because we have fifteen days under statute, but what you're doing is, if we go along with this process, we have to vote on something one night and file the decision the next day. And that's a small sort of thing, but that's.
I, I do want to point something out, okay? That was not the intent. And what we did when we filed in August was we mirrored the prior one that you accepted without raising that issue. And it was really more as a placeholder. So we had one already in place where we agreed to extend to August 19th, knowing the hearing was August 18th. And that wasn't a problem. So when we came back and we filed again on August 18th, we just picked two random days. The next hearing was September 1st. The next hearing was September 1st, and we went till September 2nd. And we didn't do it with any malice or --
No, but we're now getting to the point where the dates actually are far more meaningful than they were before. And that's my only point, is that you can't have them in consecutive dates.
Which is exactly what we wanted to do, but in a forum and have the discussion. I mean, I had even reached out to town council last week and said, "Is there a way we can have a meeting without violating public meeting laws, where we can start to negotiate the actual dates you're looking for and we're looking for?" And I believe that, as we didn't get a response, I believe that the answer was, "No, we'd rather do it in the public meeting." That's why we're here. Again, I don't want to tell you I want a decision tomorrow, but I would like to know when we can reasonably rely on getting one, what steps the board thinks we need to take to get there, what type of reviews is needed, and can we start getting it done expedited as quickly as we can? We just don't want to lose our place in the queue, because if we lose our place in the queue, then all of this was worthless.
Maybe ask members of the board, maybe put the thing on a different plane and say, "What are the kinds of things that we need to do in order to render a decision?" Some of them are legal and some of them are procedural, and, you know, we put those things out, and that maybe gives us a better idea. I don't know. But it's just, or maybe, you know, how would everybody like to --
What is the deadline in the queue?
There is no deadline. When they get to you, if you don't have everything submitted, you're done. You go to the back of the line. If there's no space in the queue, you don't get back in line.
You have no idea where you stand in that process? How many people are in front of you, behind you? It's just a mystery?
It's partially filled. We know that there are still some open spots in the queue, but again, you're right. It's state legislation and state politics at its best.
But I mean, there must be a formal list of who's on the list, right? Right? And how many projects there are, and so, I mean, there has to be an idea of where you stand.
You can take it. Yes, ma'am. My name is Dan Leary. I'm not a lawyer, so I'm very happy to answer all these questions directly.
We only tip the fifth degree for the lawyers.
He'll smack me over the head if I say -- so the deal with the net metering queue, ma'am, is that it's driven by the legislature. The legislature -- without getting into all the details, because I'll be happy to explain them all to you, I just don't know that you want me to right now. We probably have a couple more weeks, maybe three, maybe four more weeks, but I'm targeting a couple more weeks when the legislature gets back in session, passes a bill which is going to raise this cap of maximum amount of projects that can go into what's called the net metering queue. Once that happens, we go on a waiting list, and there's no indication, it could be years, it could be never before the project could be built. So, yes, we know how many projects are currently on the waiting list. Through developers and other people that we know, we understand how many projects will be coming into it imminently. Frankly, to get onto the waiting list, we don't need to have a fully 100% vetted project. We need to know that the project can be built. And I think that's what Attorney Rosen was starting to refer to, is, you know, some of these milestones, some of them need to happen really fast. Some of them, like we said, we've welcomed the opportunity for a public discussion about this, because I'd love to hear your thoughts.
So when the legislature goes back in and they vote on this, is it immediately funded or is there a time period?
So several things happened, ma'am. One is, so National Grid files, we sign an interconnection with National Grid. The second thing happens is, maybe the town of North Andover would sign up to become the host of the project. So this isn't just about a private development project. This is actually a public-private partnership. In fact, and most important to call out, is that it's not our group that applies for the net metering cap. It's actually the town of North Andover. So the town of North Andover by statute can apply for up to 10 megawatts of cap capacity. This happens to be a project that's in the town, that the town would benefit from.
Does the town have to do that, or is that a necessary --
It's -- this town does not have to do. If we want to build a project this size, a public entity would have to agree to be the host. If a public entity doesn't agree to be the host, it's filed under a different type of project. So in this particular case, there's such great ups -- this is the win-win of projects from my perspective, but I do a lot of work in the solar industry. The town has quite a bit to gain from this project, so that's why we're, you know, we talked about --
Have those discussions started?
Yes, they have. One other point that's important to note, the host doesn't have to be the town in which the solar array is built.
Correct.
So, again, we want it to be, we want the host to be North Andover. We have started discussions with North Andover. One of the issues is, one of the next processes along the way is, the town has to host, if the town wants to be the host, and the town manager has to check a box. And that box has to say that non-ministerial permits and approvals have been granted, but that ministerial permits and approvals can still remain. So that, to the extent we can get through the majority of this, that we can get through the plan approval, and even if there were conditions, even if there were additional things that you want to look at, the town is waiting for this board to tell the town that, in fact, they're going to allow the use, just like they were waiting for the zoning board to let the town know they're going to allow the use. And until that happens, the box that needs to be checked to hold our place in line can't take place.
One thing came up when you were describing where you stand and what the process is. At what point, if we were to give permission to go ahead with this, would it sunset? Because it almost sounded like, when you said it might never be built, but we usually put a limit on when these things expire.
Actually, that's a good question. I take that. Well, as matters of law, it's probably, we'd have to look at the statutes. And I think either Tom or I, or I could, and we report back to you, I think there's probably a provision that says that a permit that's not acted on within a certain period of time expires. I don't know that that's actually the rule for a plan approval. I'd have to look at your bylaws specifically, because plan approval, again, isn't a special permit. Under special permit, I think it's, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, two years?
We usually, yeah, everything we typically have here is two years. Doesn't sound like that we're doing. And, you know, the only reason I say that is, you know, we're in a very fluid market with the solar. You know, it's likely other people will come along with equally attractive, maybe more attractive things in the future. Maybe other uses for that property would come. I mean, if we're locked into something for a period and nothing happens, and then doesn't happen because the state cuts back on the funding, what's the exposure that we have on this property there?
So I guess we're not fully understanding that. I mean, I think it would be no different than any other permit or approval you approve, whatever the time limitations are, as a matter of law.
Because if it's two years, fine, but if it's 20, then there's something else.
Off the top of my head, I'm not. Would the town lock in the solar project? Yeah, so you're -- definitely not. I'm sorry, if I understood the question correctly, if the --
Would the town get locked into a solar project and lose other opportunities to do other solar projects if they would --
Or do residential construction? Tear the big building down and put in condos?
No. I have a presentation for later on. I'd be happy to discuss what the impacts of this would be and how that impacts everything else, but no, I don't see how --
Suppose we wanted to do that three years from now, but you had a six-year deadline on a lock-in on this thing.
So this question specifically is, if we're in the queue, and we've submitted everything in the queue, and we've been approved, is there anything that would -- I mean, we obviously don't sit on the approval and not build. We build because we want to build, and we want to -- but is there a chance we're in the queue, but we end up sitting and waiting for the government for two, three, four, five, or, to your point, I think, as you said, 20 years? Could we be sitting there waiting? And I mean, I guess at the same time, as the owner, I don't think we would sit and wait for 20 years if another opportunity came around. I mean, the person that would be losing the most money would be the developer, I mean, would be the owner. It would be, but --
Yeah, but the town would not be locked into hosting in that arrangement, and yeah.
Is the property tied to other uses?
I don't -- I don't know.
No, if they have a broken construction.
I would go back and I would look at your bylaws, and that's a question I will get answered for you, on how long this type of approval would be outstanding.
I mean, I would think that something we would do would say that, "We're not going to let you sit in this queue waiting on the Massachusetts legislature to do something that makes sense."
Okay.
I have a question on, going back to the application which was filed March 20th. Is that the application we're on currently?
Yes.
Okay. Just because this has recently come up, who is Ellen Keller? Because she's not listed as an agent for Ausgood Solar.
She's the vice president.
Okay, she's not listed on the state, because we just had this come up where someone applied for something who --
At the state, you only have to list, I believe, the president, the treasurer, and the secretary. She's an executive vice president at the company.
And 1600 Ausgood LLC is not listed with the state as the owner. I'm just making sure this application's correct, because we just had someone file an application.
So the applicant is Ausgood Solar LLC.
Correct.
I believe the property owner was 1600 Ausgood Street LLC.
Okay, so this is wrong. This is 1600 Ausgood LLC, which is not listed with the state. So I think we might need to get town council's opinion on the original application, if it's correct, because the owner, the owner didn't sign off on it. It's not before us. Because we just had this problem with a property last meeting. The owner never signed off on the project.
Well, I presume, with the hearing still open, if that was an issue that town council would have an issue with, I would presume the owner can sign the consent at this time?
We did have a letter from --
The letter and the application is a little different.
It came with the application, March 17th, authorizing the application.
But this is the application.
This came with the -- as far as I know. I mean, this was in my files or what?
Put a letter in.
Yeah, I know, you used them all. Yes, but that's Ausgood Solar LLC.
Is it?
That's not the same.
Laura, do you have any sort of observations with the process and the timing?
I mean, I'm just really unclear as to the difference between the two reviews and where we're at on, I mean, to have that thrown at us.
Normally, we would have gotten this, we would have heard it, you know. I don't like this timeline issue that we're in limbo on, you know, that it didn't come through at the right process. They asked for the continuance, they asked for the zoning board, but they filed it prior. I'm still --
Yeah, I mean, yeah, there are a lot of unusual circumstances here, to say the least, that make this a little bit more complicated than normal, and that's my point a little bit is, aside from the fact that this is technically been open for a really long period of time, if this came to the planning board for the very first time, what we would have is, we would have a clear-cut, unambiguous plan that we could look at, feel comfortable that this is the plan, we could send it to our outside consultant. There's, there would be no issues about the clock tolling and the type of permit. It would be a pretty clean sort of thing, but in this case, I feel like there's a lot of things that are still open. But, you know, frankly, if, under normal circumstances, if something with this complexity, if we had a complete application that we were completely comfortable with and there was no legal issue, we're talking probably, if this was the first hearing, we'd probably go to the end of October. I mean, that's under sort of typical circumstances when we would go to. So that's, you know, just the back and forth and so forth. I mean, it would take three or four meetings to be to the point where we would be ready to vote something like this.
I don't think my client would be willing to go to October right now. I don't think they would be willing to go to the end of October.
So where does that leave us?
We're willing to give a bit of time for now and come back and revisit it at a future hearing, depending on what information's been shared and which additional information this board might need.
I mean, I think something along those lines would be, as a way to move us through it. I mean, I think that we're, you know, as I said, I think our approach is to treat every applicant fairly in terms of this. There's a lot of unusual circumstances here that make this more complicated than normal. I think that maybe what we could do to kickstart it, at least to get us going, and I want to put this in context a little bit, but to get the pressure of time off of everybody's back mutually, is maybe what we do is we go the first meeting in October and make it Friday the end of that week. And then we come back the next time, because on the 15th, we'll clearly know, we'll have the decision filed, we'll be able to see if there's any differences, we'll have a chance to talk to council, and we'll be ready to clear the decks moving forward, and then we could decide at that next meeting whether we're going to need time past another meeting or not. But that's, that seems to be about the best.
I know you don't have a meeting scheduled for September 29th right now. However, my understanding was that that was a possibility for a hearing, and then I guess my next question is, when would the first hearing in October be?
The 29th would rule me out. 29th would rule me out. My wife's having an operation during that time period.
Now, we do the first and third Tuesday. We never do special meetings.
Yeah, although, let's be flexible about roughly the timeframe for any number of reasons, not least of which is, you know, I may have a travel problem myself someplace in there, so. But, I mean, I don't mind sort of saying sometime around the end of September, beginning of October, we'll see what we can do. We just need to, there needs to be -- we normally do meet on the first and third Tuesdays, and that's generally what we like to do, but if we can figure out if, because of people's travel schedules and so forth, we have to make a tweak to that, we would consider doing that.
And you would want an extension for at least a week beyond that date to give you time to write it, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. How would we handle peer review and the plans? Would we review them once tonight so that we could see if there are any significant issues that you identify? And if you don't identify any significant issues, would be permitted to commence peer review immediately? Again, at our risk.
Say that again? I just missed the beginning of what you said.
Would we have an opportunity to go through the plans once this evening, identify whether or not there are any significant issues with the plan that you say, and that if not, then could we commence peer review rather than waiting until after you see the written ZBA decision?
Could we include the zoning board's decision with the documents we send for peer review?
Sure. I mean, I think, yeah, I mean, I think what we could do is --
So that would be the time rather than tomorrow.
If we got, well, could we get the plan to them, get them started on the plan and let them know that --
Do you have costs?
Well, no, I mean, we could, well, the question ends up being, do you want to have a discussion tonight on the plan itself or --
We actually would appreciate the opportunity to show you the plans tonight and make sure that there isn't anything, I mean, it doesn't make a lot of sense, and correct me if I'm wrong, to sit here and negotiate specific dates and then turn them on and show you the plan at the next meeting, and for you to look at the plan and say, "You know what? We need at least 60 more days." I mean, I think out of fairness to both sides, we do believe this is the final plan. These were revised after the zoning board meeting. We cleaned them up. We addressed issues and concerns that were not conditions, but that we picked up from the discussions over preparing for zoning over the past six to eight weeks, and we believe these are the final plans, and having some input and some guidance so that we know that if we extended until the beginning of October, we wouldn't be starting from scratch in October. That would mean a lot to us.
I don't really stay in that concern at that time. I have work to do myself. I just --
Are you okay with --
Like, 20 minutes?
A few minutes, because is everybody --
I'd rather jump to that than and get the legal off --
Yeah, I mean, that's fine, but I think, I don't want you to over -- I don't want you to over or under conclude from anything questions we ask, that it's a full and voluminous set of our comments or the thing. But it's fair enough if you want to present it. That gives us an understanding of what you're trying to do, and it takes us--
And it would give us an understanding as to the reasonableness of whether or not 30 more days would get us there, which is, I think, all we're asking in fairness.
Okay, well, then--
You know what? I'm shutting up. Go down.
Well, yeah, let's surely--
I'm going to actually also go call the client and start to talk dates with them so that when he's done, we can be prepared to have a meaningful discussion.
You see that okay? I'm sorry, Christine, is it possible to pull up the presentation that I pulled in just so it-- Maybe? I'll get started while it's coming up. This is a pretty detailed presentation, and I hate to rush through it because, like I said, there's a lot of benefits to the town and to the property. But let me try and get through this in a few minutes since we have time constraints. So Osgood Solar is proposing to develop six megawatts on underutilized areas of the property. This is going to enhance the property and attract commercial businesses. It's going to deliver substantial economic value to the town. And this is going to add to an existing solar array that's already on the property that not too long ago was the largest solar array in the state, privately owned solar array in the state. So this property has a long history, not just with these solar assets, but also in the solar industry itself, being home to some of the nation's, a couple of the nation's top solar companies. There is a limited opportunity in Massachusetts for towns to benefit, and Osgood Solar and North Andover must obtain these timely approvals in order to qualify. And we've already discussed that. On solar energy, the next slide. Systems are over 50 years old. It's a very proven technology. There's over 800 megawatts installed in Massachusetts. The sun's energy is converted into electricity and silicon cells. Solar helps stabilize the electric grid. It's 100% renewable energy, and it creates absolutely zero emissions.
What's the largest single site in the state?
10 megawatts under development. I can get you the name of that town. There's a number of six-megawatt sites. You can go up to 10 megawatts on contiguous parcels. Yeah, we can get you the names of those sites. There, in fact, what we're talking about with this project is this bullet, this bolden bullet. Enough solar energy lands on the roofs and parking lots of Osgood Landing to power all the North Andover municipal electric meters. And that's so important to me, I'm going to say it again. Enough solar energy lands on the roof and parking lots of Osgood Landing to power all the North Andover municipal electric meters. And that's what this project is about. Next slide, please. Solar power is becoming a rapidly standard part of the landscape. Owners of properties recognize that they want to be competitive. They're recognizing that new businesses of the 21st century are looking for a focus on health and the environment, in places to locate their headquarters and R&amp;D and manufacturing businesses. And they frankly do find covered parking for their employees to be an attractive feature here in New England. And I want to just point to in North Andover, is, in our research, the rate for a covered parking spot in North Andover is $85 a car a month. And we've seen that number vary around the state. Parking canopies are also going to improve the view of the proposed residential land by screening the large parking lot, breaking the lines of the industrial facility, and dramatically improving the nighttime appearance through accent lighting, different types of lighting. Some examples of regional sites. Endicott College in Beverly, where they have multi-megawatts of carport canopies. The Danversport Yacht Club, where they have a carport canopy. Boston Properties down in Weston has a carport canopy. And many other sites, without listing them all--
What's the largest size of any one of those?
Megawatts or--
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying to-- I mean, this is very nice, there's examples, but is the scale the same?
These are just a few. I think the largest site listed on there is a couple megawatts, two and a half megawatts at Endicott College. Most municipal projects out there are six megawatts in size, so this is a very typical size for municipal projects. Where--
Does that mean a municipal project?
Yes, ma'am. Where the person that's receiving all the energy benefit is actually a public entity. A town-- Like, a sanitary district, a water, some sort of enterprise, public enterprise.
But like, what's an example of a town that's receiving that?
Who, which towns have done--
Is there another town around here?
Oh, Andover. Probably look at every town around us. Most-- I would guesstimate well over half the towns have signed up and are doing some sort of properties right now. Kurt Bellevan's just signed up a big project in Tingsborough. You know, everybody's doing it. Mr. Mailer's been tracking this opportunity for a long time. It's sort of a one-time, take advantage of it while it's here, because it won't be here forever for municipalities.
Okay, sorry.
So, again, every retailer on that last bullet, Whole Foods, Target, Walmart, BJ's Stop &amp; Shop, these are some that I've personally done work with. But everybody's looking to incorporate solar on their facilities. This is not a new thing. Next slide, please.
Just real quick on that point. I thought it was kind of humorous. I got one of my quarterly monthly magazines from B.E. the other day. And I thought it was interesting that they're talking about what the states are with businesses and business schools today. This is from the Queston School of Management at B.E. They're showing us that that's what business looks like, and that's what everyone thinks of it as. And the problem is, is that's not what business is today. This is business today. And I thought it was interesting. The first thing that jumped out at me is they had solar on the roof. And, you know, the quote in the article was millennials want to make an impact, not just make money. So I thought that was an interesting meeting, an interesting article. Let's see this. Timing's everything. You know, I got it two days ago in the mail. I thought it was a rod.
Okay, so again, the opportunity, I don't know how much I have to repeat of this one.
Can you give us a 30-second explanation of how the economics of this thing works?
Yes, sir.
Do you sell the--
If you--
There you go. I wish you straight, man.
Okay. The town benefit, I'm just going to read one bullet from the previous slide. The town benefits from negotiating terms with developers to host, to permit, to tax, and to purchase energy credits. So there's two slides, ones to the economics for the property. It's an energy generating asset. This is the new grid. The grid is a big power plant.
I guess, cut to the chase. Who do you sell it to and what price do you sell it to?
Lou, can you go to the next slide, please? So these are the economics for the town. Six-megawatt facility is taxable property and--
Yeah, but that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking very speed. What price do you sell the energy to--
I'm sorry.
To the utilities?
The G1 rate.
So is that a high, is it pegged on your cost of production?
So what happens is-- I don't want to get ahead of the town, but let's say the town agrees to sign up to be a host. The town in North Andover is going to put, National Grid is going to put an energy meter, an electric meter on the property. All the solar energy is going to come through it. That meter is going to be in the name of the town of North Andover. So where, right now, you get an electric bill from every month from National Grid that tells you how much you owe. This particular meter is going to be giving them a credit every month. And let's say there's a $100 credit one month. What the town in North Andover is going to agree to do with us through what's called a net metering contract agreement is they're going to agree that for the next 20 years or 25 years, however long it makes sense for both parties to come to, that they're going to pay us some of that back. And what we pay back, I've been asked, it probably wouldn't be appropriate to get into the details. It has been negotiated with the town.
Okay.
Significant number.
Okay.
So, and that's one component of the--
Basically, the town of North Andover is going to give you some amount of money every month, and you're going to make the meter run backwards.
Exactly.
And if it runs backward a lot more than they pay you, then it's great. In the winter months, it's probably not as good.
We model all that out. We know exactly how much energy is going to be made every month. The sound, the sun is so reliable.
I see the life of these things is about 20 years.
Sorry, I haven't raised that up. Can you tell us what you're actually going to do on the site?
Absolutely. So, and on the site, first, the reason why we've come back with updated plans is because we had been originally proposing to build on not just the business opportunity zone, but also the mixed-use zone. If you could go back up one slide, please. Just maybe I should orient you to the three zones of the Osgod. Up on top, you have the red zone, which is residential. The green in the middle is the mixed-use. And the blue on the bottom is the business opportunity zone. Route 125 is on the right-hand side as you're looking at that. So what this plan right here shows is for us to build six megawatts somewhere within the business opportunity zone. We originally had a slice that was in the mixed development zone, but based on the findings from last week at the ZBA, we're not certain about that. So we removed it for the sake of this meeting and updated the plans. So what we're proposing is really two types of solar. One type was where we put it on the roof, and nobody sees it. You just never even know it's there. The other type is a carport canopy. An example of that is shown there on the bottom left-hand side of the screen, which is a parking lot at Whole Foods. So that's what we're proposing. In our plan, approximately two-thirds of the total solar panels are going to be in carport canopies. And those are shown in red outline. So you have an area on the north, which is called the north parking lot. An area in the south parking lot, and over to the west. And the other third of the panels are up on the roofs of the back warehousing area and the front administrative area.
Will you propose any one of, there was another picture. Can you bring the--
Which one, the ones on the bottom?
You're not going to do any of those ground ones, are you?
Not for-- Not for this application. Certainly would appreciate the opportunity in the future, if that makes more sense with the town, to look at ground-mount systems. There's a lot of benefits to ground-mount systems on property that's not being otherwise utilized.
Not for this project? It's just going to be the carports and the roof?
That's what we're proposing here. Correct. Carports and roofs.
Because the carport thing's actually-- They're great, look nice.
They're beautiful. I just--
The one there is not a reproduction. The picture there is an actual Whole Foods supermarket.
Beautiful's a strong word, but look nice.
It may be a little strong.
Yeah.
How do you clean these, take that carport example. How do you clean the snow off without damaging the solar panels? I mean, let's say we had a winter where there was 100 inches of snow.
We'd never get one.
I know.
So, so, snow is actively managed. It's, we design these so that the snow doesn't come off it until you want it to. So you either actively remove it or you let it melt. So they're designed so that, you know, snow stays up there.
Yeah, I read the method to keep the snow there. But my question was, let's say you want to clean it off so that they can operate.
Sure.
How do you clean it off without damaging the solar panels?
So you can use roof rakes, depending on the slope, the tilt that it's at. You may be able to use other techniques, but--
And it won't damage the panels?
No. I wake up at my house, I have a ground-mount system. I go out and shovel them the morning after a--
Scraping across doesn't damage it?
No, no.
And under this plan, it's kind of a similar question to John's of how does it work? So the meter's going to have the name of the town of North Andover on it. Does that mean that the town of North Andover has to clear the snow if North Andover wants that meter to operate?
That's the second-best part of this. There is absolutely zero cost, zero maintenance, zero anything to the town of North Andover. This is 100% privately owned, privately maintained, privately constructed.
But what about clearing the snow off? Because let's say the town wants the snow to be cleared so that it gets the benefit. Because when the snow's on, you're not producing any power.
Removal of the snow is an economic decision, just like any other power plant, any other asset. On a sunny day in January, this system could be making $10,000 of energy a day. And we're going to be, you know, this is an actively managed energy generating asset. We're going to be looking at the forecast. Hey, it's, if it's March and the snow's going to melt the next day, we're probably not going to do anything. If it's January and there's two weeks without any weather coming, probably send crews out there and start clearing it. But it is an economic decision whether you actively remove it.
And that'll be covered if you're agreeing with the town of North Andover?
Yes, the agreement assumes the weather.
Mr. General, maybe-- I think you have to make sure, you are assuming that North Andover is going to be a host.
That was the assumption.
I think that's what you're answering these questions about. I think you have to make a very distinct difference between if North Andover is not the host, which is where these questions are coming from, assuming North Andover was the host. I think you may make a leap here, that North Andover is going to be the host. So I think you have to be very careful in answering the questions, differentiating in your answers, assuming North Andover's a host and assuming North Andover is not a host. I mean, North Andover may have a net metering agreement, which is one thing, but that's totally different from being a host.
Yes, sir.
So you, I think, if you clarify those two distinctions.
I'll be more specific. North Andover does not need to host this project. Any municipality in the northeast region of National Grid can host the project. North Andover would still get the benefit of-- I'm sorry, I'll be, potentially the benefit of pilot revenues and building permit revenues from it. But all this does assume, if North Andover's not the host, another town could be the host.
I'm sorry, speaking in the definition of a host.
Yes, ma'am.
Because it seems logical that we could be the host if it's in our town and we're getting the benefit from it.
National Grid makes it, so a host is whoever's going to own the, whoever's going to have the benefit of the net meter that's going to be installed at the site. And right now, we could approach any community in the northeastern Massachusetts that falls, that meets the National Grid criteria, that doesn't already, that isn't already hosting other projects. North Andover happens to not be hosting other projects, so North Andover could be the host. North Andover--
For Lawrence Municipal Airport.
I think the municipal airport could, Great Alarn Sanitary District could. I didn't answer your question very well. A host, a host is just-- These assets generate energy. There's going to be a savings to, there's a benefit to somebody. The way the state set up this whole system, the reason why we're sort of talking fast right now, is because they set aside half of all the solar that's going to be placed out there to go to the direct benefit of public entities. And what they said is that, well, we're going to distribute it a certain way, and we're going to allow each town to be able to host up to 10 megawatts. So this is six megawatts. So this is about half of what the town could host. And by signing up to be a host, that town's able to administratively sign for this meter and take the energy credits while also setting up a development agreement with the project.
So is there like a bidding war going on with different municipalities? Or are you only talking to North Andover at this point? I mean, I--
So you asked two different questions.
Wow.
The second question is, as of right now, we're only talking to North Andover.
I mean, so your approach is making it sound like North Andover is going to get this huge benefit. That's how, that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, let me, I'd love to explain it--
But if we're not going to get a huge benefit.
We are with the town and asking the town to check the box. We are actively meeting with Andrew. We do not have a contract negotiated. We do not have a contract signed. If Andrew steps forward and the town checks the box, they're checking it as our host. One of the, you know--
One of the, you know, it's the catch-22 with ZBA and planning. Andrew doesn't want to get into active final negotiations on anything like this until he knows that, in fact, it's an allowable use. It's kind of like a catch-22. We've got to show that we can build the project. It has to be beyond all its non-ministerial permits. We can certainly represent to you that the town of North Andover is the only host we've spoken to so far. And I guess you could probably inquire of the town manager or the Economic Development Director, who could confirm the same for you.
Before you mentioned the rate, I think you said G1. I think that's generation one.
What's the same rate?
What's the cost per kilowatt hour to produce this power?
What, how --
It's solar. Solar, we're putting this site together, and then the sun is generating electricity.
What's the cost per kilowatt hour to produce, feel like? Because obviously, when the smoke clears, there's all these costs that are being incurred someplace to produce this. What's the total cost of, I mean, the output compared to the, I'm just trying to understand sort of the --
Yeah, I don't know that. We'd have to get permission from the client to disclose the economics of what it costs to build the project.
Well, it's not so much that. I'm asking, I'm trying to figure out where the subsidies are on this, if indeed there are any, because there seems to be money moving all over the place here, and somebody's giving something else. If this is cheaper to build electricity than hydro power or, you know, natural gas or something like that, well, that's great. But if the cost is much higher and it's just being a move the peas around game, it's might be good for some people, but it's not good for everybody.
So, I mean, at the end of the day, Massachusetts adopted 48, Section 3, a provision that says you can't prohibit solar. The state came forward and they said we want --
Yeah, that's not the question I asked.
I understand that. I mean, we don't do an economic analysis against other types of electric generation facilities. We're working on a solar project. We're working on it under state law, and we're moving forward with it. I think the economics, those are really questions for town manager, Economic Development Director. I mean, we're looking at the plans, you know, for the particular site. It's not an economic, you know, question. I mean, that will take up with town.
So, I think The Economist had an analysis on that.
So, let's get to the, back to the substance of what you're -- can you tell me the footprint, both of what's on the ground, if you will, and what's on the roof of the total size of what you're doing? How many acres of footprint are we talking about here?
So, this is about -- You're referring to the rooftop to everything, or just the canopies?
Well, let's deal with the rooftop versus the not rooftop. I'm just trying to get an idea of the footprint of this.
So, each module has about 20 square feet of space? Each module, oh, each module's about the size of this desk. It's 19,000 modules roughly in this project. 2/3 of them on the roof, excuse me, 2/3 of them on carport canopies, 1/3 on the roof, if that gives you a sense. In terms of coverage.
Yeah, I know.
Well, we'll see if our mathematicians can --
I was just about to say 400,000 square feet, but I -- 2/3 is ground.
250,000.
Four on the ground, 200. We were about 450,000 square feet previously on the ground or everywhere.
Did you say each module is 20 square feet, did you say? Each module's 20 square? And there's 19,000? So, it's 380,000 square feet.
Exactly. Just saying about 400. So, that's the actual module space? Now, modules aren't always very down.
Next to each other, some, there's, like, if you're, so if you're, Whole Foods, if you looked at that, that picture, there's accessways. It's just covering the cars. So, this is not displacing any other activity on the canopies. This is just covering cars. There's no change to what you can do underneath it. You can still park underneath every solar panel. That's not an issue.
John, just to give you an idea, 380,000 square feet is the equivalent of 8.7 acres. Just to, you know, what does it mean?
So, and the total site combined, all it is 167 acres in total.
And the rate that whoever is the owner gets from this is determined by the amount that the meter spins backwards. And that, by state law, I guess, or at least we're saying, is the same as they would pay if they got the electricity from the grid. Is that true?
It's, I'm sorry, but it's a lot more complicated than that. I'd love to explain it. I don't know if you want me to. What I can say about the economics to Ms. McSherry's point.
The only reason I'm saying this is there is law now that says the amount the utilities have to refund from solar generation is relatively higher than the utilities want to pay. And there's a very active lobbying thing going on right now to get that reduced.
I don't know about that. That's sort of, this is a project about, so the G1 rate means that if you were to purchase energy under the G1 rate for this building, you'd be paying 23.4 cents a kilowatt hour. If you were to make it through solar power and feed it back out, you'd be making a credit of 23.4 cents per kilowatt hour.
That's slowly driving the electric utilities bankrupt, but --
Oh, I don't --
But that's okay. We'll make it up with our residential charges.
Okay, so you answered partly one question of the mass. It's actually given that, you're right, that if you looked at the acreage of the stuff in red, circled in red, it would be a little bit more than 2/3. Well, you said, starting with 2/3 of the total acreage, but it would also, there's space between it. So, the footprint, if you will, of which the stuff is, is, you know, it's going to be a little bit bigger than that. It seemed to me you should be able to tell us exactly what the acreage is of the things in red. You don't have to do that right now, but it would seem to me that that would be something you'd want to know. And I have no idea for the stuff that's on the roof, what that means and what that looks like.
I can get some better photographs.
And the so-called orange building on the left is not there, right?
Correct. This is the Osgood from, concept from 2007. We thought it'd be most beneficial to show the overlay of what we're proposing as, still with the vision of the Osgood. The plans you have are against the as-built in the current conditions.
Did you say there's no issues from solar?
Yes, ma'am.
There's no health issues?
No, no.
There are actually some studies showing that there's the birds migratory and everything like that, because the heat is attractive to, of this size, is, there are some concerns with the, the birds fly into the heat and then burn up. So, there are some concerns with solar of this size.
So, yeah.
Ma'am, you might be referring to the concentrated solar systems and, so that type of technology, where they were having those issues is concentrated. So, it's done in the desert. It uses a lot of mirrors that rotate, focused light onto a, sort of an aperture, heats it into steam. And what was happening is the birds would fly across that, and that's a very different technology than this.
It's on the Osgood, these seven panels I've read about, so.
Okay.
Can I ask another question?
Yes, ma'am.
Not seeing your application in front of me or anything. Are you specifically limiting the type of whatever to carports and what's going on the roof that you can't see? That's what you're saying, right? It's going to be specifically those carports?
This is what we're presenting to you.
It's in the plans and everything else.
Correct. If we wanted to change anything, we would have to come to the plan.
And you can't see on the roof? You can't see them on the roof? They lie flat?
Oh, yeah. You'd have to be above the roof to see it.
Well, how high do they go up on the roof?
Yeah.
12 or 13 inches, 12 inches.
How high is the canopy or how high above?
Well, high, if you look at the roof itself, how high do the things project in the roof? And then we, you look at, so you're saying that none of them, they lie flat, basically flat on the roof?
Five, maybe 10-degree flat on the roof. The highest part of the module on the roof is about? About a foot.
About a foot. So, if there was any canopy on the roof, you would never see them?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
If there was a canopy on the roof, or --
Parapet.
A parapet, rather, on the roof, you would never see them?
Correct. I mean, this is a massive roof, so you --
But you're talking about on the roof.
Yeah. So, there is a parapet around a lot of, and maybe all of the roof. You can't, you can't, so there's actually 180 kilowatts right over here. You can't see that from the ground. You've got to Google Earth to be able to see that.
But I guess the question was specifically where you're proposing putting on the roof, is there a parapet and how high up does it go?
I don't believe there is a problem.
I have to look to see on this part of it. There's definitely a parapet on this part of the roof. You couldn't see that through Route 125. Secondly, is the modules have to have a standoff from the edge for engineering reasons, which is at least 10 feet. So, you know, if you're a foot off the ground, I mean, the trigonometry, you'd have to be well above the height of the roof to see it.
Okay. Now, when the, how does it, where does the, sort of, the power go? Okay, it's all the cells. How does it get concentrated and where does it get sent?
Yes, sir.
How does it get into the grid, I guess, is my question?
It's like the making of the Mississippi River. Each one of these little panels is a puddle, and the puddles get aggregated together through distribution equipment, forming the streams of the power. They come into inverters, which convert the energy from DC to AC.
Yeah.
And the AC gets --
What does it look like?
What does it look like?
Oh, what's it look like?
What does it look like?
It's a bit of toast.
Is it like a big building? Is it, what is it?
The inverters themselves are about the size of a refrigerator. So, let's say the inverters, and I think we have maybe 14 of them, that are proposed within the array are about, about the size of a couple of refrigerators stacked next to each other. And then you have transformers. It's, the footprint of the distribution equipment to put this into the grid is extremely small. The footprint is really the solar panels themselves.
Where's it going to be located on the site?
Charge to page 7 of 20 on the plan. None of them will be in the front of the property, but they're very small.
Do we just have it on the screen? Like a picture.
So, if you look, if you're on the street and you're looking back, there are the right, okay? I'll slide this across, but if you're looking back, one is over here.
What does it look like? I don't see one.
So, if this is the street, one is over here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
One is in the back. I just lost it. One is right here, and the other one is, I'm missing the one in the back, but they're
They're not big.
No, they're small. Okay, so here you go.
Are they freestanding on the ground?
You know what? We'll bring a picture of one to the next meeting.
Yeah, that would be good. Pictures are good.
Yep.
And if they sit in a concrete pad?
It's a concrete pad. What you're seeing here on the plan is the location of the concrete pad. It's John, page 7.
So, what it is, John, see this? So, there's one. So, this inverter covers this. This inverter covers all of this, and this inverter right here would cover this whole section.
And then you got one for the roof, too?
And, yeah, and then inverters, I don't think we showed the inverters on the roof because they may actually be inside the building. Yeah.
Okay, got that. Okay, does anybody have any more questions for the moment? I'm --
I can't, yeah.
Well, I'll make a comment. I mean, when you come back, we've already asked you questions of what does it look like, how high, and, you know, we ask those questions. And, you know, you have photos of things, and, you know, we're asking about a parapet because we want to know what's it going to look like? So, we're going to --
Do you have like a model or anything?
We're going to need those kind of answers.
So, I mean, from the questions so far, the questions I have are the height and the look, both above the carports and on the roof of the building, a parapet, a picture of an inverter, the exact acreage of the space under the red-lined-in carport areas, confirmation with town council as to whether or not we need to do anything as to 1600 Osgood Street LLC, and the duration to which a plan approval can be conditioned so that we're not sitting here in 20 years having the same discussion.
A slight version, what happens if the laws should change so that this thing isn't economic, is economical anymore? What happens to the equipment? Does it always continue to run? Or, I mean, yeah, suppose they were to cut the refund rate to the municipality?
The time is so late refund rate. You're actually selling it. You enter into a contract to sell it. And that contract is for how long, Dan? With the grid, 20 years?
The contract is however long the town wants to negotiate the contract for. It's typically 15, 20, or 25-year terms. Most common is 20 to 25.
So, the contract is, sets the price that it's going to be at?
It sets the formula for the price, not the price. The price will vary as G1 varies. The term will be as negotiated.
And how is the proportion of, proportion of the revenue that goes to the company, the owner versus the town? How is that decided?
As negotiated.
And has that been negotiated?
It has not.
Typically, in the residential, the --
Well, I'd like to hear the answer.
Yeah, and this is very important. Mr. Mailer is tracking this project very closely, will not start a negotiation until he knows that this is a project that can be built, regardless of how it's conditioned. He needs to know it's, so once that happens, we'll be able to negotiate something. It's very common to negotiate a pilot and just a coupon, a discount that happens for every dollar that's made from it. And what I can say to answer Ms. McSherry's question from way earlier on is that it is a competitive market. Mr. Mailer knows what the competition is, and when he sits down to negotiate with us, he's going to know what the market conditions are. So, you know, this will be a very fair deal for all parties.
And I appreciate you keeping note of the questions, but I just wanted to offer that, I mean, I'm sure you know there's likely to be additional questions, right?
Currently, under the presentation, we are not proposing the public hearing to see that. that.
I have a couple of comments and questions. The parking lot is pretty unsound in many of these areas. There are so many cracks that you can't even be considered pavement. Could be porous pavement. You're going to have a significant load added to the parking lot. You're going to have, having to scrape off snow. You're probably going to have to use Bobcats instead of plows in the parking lot. What are you going to do about the parking lot? Because it's going to create a situation where it's probably unusable almost, you know, by the time you bring all this equipment in to install it.
Yeah, we could get an answer to you, ma'am, on the plan for that. My experience with these is that I, the construction of this project doesn't, certainly wouldn't make the, hasn't made parking lots unusable.
Well, there, if you look at Google Earth, you can see like the cracks are every two inches in that parking lot on one of those sides. I mean, you guys have been through the site, you know, the parking lot's in pretty poor condition already. If you bring, I mean, how, I mean, how much does one of these units weigh?
Well, the units are going to be put on pilings?
Right.
That are going to be, so they're not actually sitting on asphalt.
No, but you got to bring a truck in with the units on them. You have 19,000 units, significant load of equipment coming across the site of a parking lot, which is unsound to stop.
There's trucks that, yeah, understood. We'll come.
Give Christine the locations where we could cease in, you know, something.
So, as you say that, we invite the board to go see one of these projects somewhere.
Yeah, well, just do that before next meeting.
We can give you a list if you want to go look at them on your own.
Well, that would be the best thing to do is give us, give us a list, and then you should also take some pictures of places on your own.
Someplace comparable in size.
Yes.
So we get an idea of the magnitude of it. I don't want to go and see like one little carport or something. I mean, that's not going to help us.
Or if there is a difference, at least point out what the differences are. Because we don't go back and say, oh, that's the same except for this, and we don't have to.
Exactly.
And I think another question that we had asked earlier, if you don't mind, is of the, you know, you showed us a list of other installations in the state, which was helpful, but what are the sizes of those in terms of kilowatts or megawatts? And if possible, area as well? We're talking here about nine acres worth of panels over a larger lot.
I think megawatts, megawatts will tell you that. I mean, you're roughly, the solar panels aren't different sizes. So if we show you, when we tell you it's a four-megawatt facility, presume that it's two-thirds the size of the copperage. If we tell you it's two megawatts, it's going to be a third. I mean, the panels are the panel.
Hey, we don't need to see rooftop. It's the carport thing that really.
Right.
So I have another question, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Is, is the intention that this, the carports and whatever, that business is still going to be operating as usual in Lewson Building?
Fully, absolutely.
So then the, so then the idea of the parking lot being suitable, I mean, if it's not in good shape, it's not going to be conducive to encouraging business to go there? Because that is a concern.
We use about 1,900 parking spaces right now, I believe, daily, based upon our actual tenanted uses in the building. Eighteen, nineteen hundred spaces that count Ellen gave us. So, yeah, I mean, we used, we use almost 2,000 parking spaces right now. If we took them and we destroyed them by putting the solar carports on top of them, we would have tenants with all those employees not very happy with us.
Another point about the parking lot is, that's a spot where all the snow is dumped all winter long, right? I mean, there were piles 20 feet high of snow in this parking lot somewhere. I don't know if that's going to, we're going to have to find someplace else to put that snow, if they're not going to be dumped on top of a carport, obviously. There's still some blank space, it looks like, but.
Certainly in previous projects, we've asked, what's the snow?
Part of the peer review, too.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Can I ask a quick question? For a peer review, do you have, this is a different project than typical, so is there something you have in mind for a peer reviewer? Or some elements of this are very structural in nature and some are clearly environmental as well.
Yeah, I mean, there is an element of, you're right. I would rather that we start with our regular person, and that if they say as part of this, there's some things that need to be, they can't do, or that.
Can I ask a question again from the timing perspective? Is there a way we can agree to flush that out and then not have to come back to a hearing in either two weeks or four weeks and find out we don't have the right person? Is there a way that the board can authorize a member of the board to work with the applicant and the town planner to contact your peer review? And who is the current peer review?
The engineer, Lisa Eggleston, and she doesn't, and, you know, she does all our reviews, and her strength is environmental reviewing. And in particular, you've got a lot of sheet flow, it's got to get into the existing storm drainage system, and I know that that is not part of your application packet yet. So I don't, I don't see calculations on how much water is going to run off all those panels, and I know it might enter the existing system, but how does that system incorporate that? So, I don't know. So that's, that's just one piece of it.
Okay, so maybe in the next 48 hours, if it would be okay with this board, if the town planner and I contacted Lisa?
Well, let us do it. We'll do it. But that's fair, yeah. We can, we can contact her and.
If she's not capable of doing it, would there be a backup plan so that we, again, I just don't want to lose too much.
It's just whether you're going to need additional peer review. She's capable of doing the engineering.
Well, the question, what we're trying to her is if, we would like her to trigger, I mean, and we don't, I understand your problem, you don't want the thing to be purely sequential and?
Right.
But we want to start with her, and fair enough, when we go talk to her, we'll ask her at the very beginning to see if she needs to get, you know, a structural engineer, which it seemed to me almost inevitable that we would need a structural engineer here.
Couldn't we, can we identify that person now so?
Well, I'd rather have her do it. I don't, I mean.
So you let your, if you, if you have one peer handle, okay.
Yeah, I mean, if, yeah, I think.
Understood.
It would be a little bit easier.
So she will?
I'm just looking for guidance from the board. She mentioned some structural questions about the status of parking lot, and there's structural questions on the rooftop, and I don't know what else is coming up.
So she would be authorized to select co-peer review consultants to the extent?
Or at least engage the process if, if she felt that the easiest way to do it was to get in touch with you and mutually find. I mean, she's, she's pretty good, and she's pretty fair, so.
I would, I would offer that, you know, obviously, they couldn't do their own peer review, but as solar experts and people in the industry who are doing this, if she needed some guidance on other engineers who are actively involved in solar projects?
Yeah, maybe. Maybe we will be. And obviously, some of the questions she asks are going to go back to your colleagues here, and will be answered by them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In the middle of that presentation, there's a slide called Questions That Everybody Asks. In the interest of time, I would just encourage you to read that at your leisure if you have other questions, because we tackle a lot of subjects in that presentation.
Okay.
Might be helpful.
So.
Thank you.
So, I mean, it feels to me, you can see that we are, we're willing to get a head start on that stuff. We're certainly willing to do that. As I said, I think practically speaking, it's, the next time is not going to be dispositive of all the open issues. It won't be, so it'll go into at least the next meeting, and even there, we don't know if there will still be stuff open, but I think we're moving forward, so, you know, again, I, it sort of gets us back to maybe where we started a little bit in terms of time, so.
Without being disrespectful, I am opening up my calendar, not my email.
No, no, that's fine. I, yeah.
So, the 15th of September and the 6th of October would be your next two meetings?
Okay.
Okay. That's the first and the third Tuesdays, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
What are the holidays in October? Anybody? Is it the end of the month?
It's the month of February.
So it's Sunday, so it's Monday, the 12th?
The 12th is Wednesday.
Okay, so if we did the 6th for the, the hearings, we would be on the agenda for the 15th and the 6th, and we would extend the deadline to file a written decision to the 13th.
It's a Tuesday.
Which is a week after the?
Yeah, I mean, I think notionally that is fine to, you know, if you give us a, an extension to that. I mean, there's no guarantee that as we get into this, we may have hard questions, but I think in the spirit of moving forward, I think that's, I don't know how everybody feels, but that gives us enough room to not have a date hanging over us, and, you know, it obviously appears to have a step-by-step, which I think is fair.
Can I ask a couple of quick questions? So the meeting is first open tonight, so everybody that's here tonight is eligible to sit in on any decision?
No, definitely, I don't believe so, because I believe the application was made prior to you being on the board, which I don't, I think disqualifies it.
Under the Mullen Rule, as long as she's not.
Because we actually, we heard you guys spoke on it.
I don't know what happened, did anything happen since then as far as any substance?
Well, I mean, it's, to some degree, it's, just the only thing would be is if one of us were not here, Regina were here. I mean, practically speaking, that's what we're talking about.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, I just want to.
So, Tom, if you can, I believe the only thing we've discussed so far on actually the public forum, we never really opened the public hearing, we discussed withdrawing, we discussed continuances, we discussed waiting for the ZBA. Tonight was the first time we actually opened a plan, I believe. So if we could just get confirmation that even though the associate?
I'm not going to go back at this point.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, the answer to that question is we'll check into it, but I don't think we can give you a definitive answer. I think we plan on having the five regular members of this vote, so.
Okay.
So if, we would, I think the one thing, given that's the case, we would, we would accept.
Yeah, okay, because there was no discussion. I was going to say, do we have to go back and count the absences? Well, we don't, because they're all going to, because continuuses.
Yeah.
That was, yes, that was my whole.
Yeah.
Tonight is the first public hearing as far as I view it. If I'm wrong, we can always debate it somewhere down the line, but my opinion is we don't have to count any absences before tonight. This is the first time we've opened the plans, and we can worry about it if we get to a meeting where we have less than a full contention going forward.
So, I think, given the context of our discussion, I think we would be certainly willing to entertain a motion to extend the time to render a decision based on your submission till October 13th.
And that we're on the agenda for two meetings?
Yeah, but I mean, it's, the only caveat that we'll have is if it turns out that somebody's travel schedule is, we'll, we understand, and I think we're willing to work with you in good faith, but if it turns out that we are out of pocket, we may want to jiggle the timing around a little bit.
Okay, can I, from a procedural perspective and some of the things we need to do to keep our application alive and stay in the queue? If the ZBA's decision has been written and is on the record, can we discuss that at the next meeting, which is on the 15th?
Yeah, they will file your decision by then, right? They have to.
There's a difference between if we're moving forward for a special permit versus a plan approval. A special permit has certain denial rights.
Right, no, I understand. I mean, I feel like we have to have a separate discussion with counsel on this, and we're doing a little bit of a, I don't know if you call it belt suspenders or what, but we're dealing with, right now, we've been operating under the premise that one of, we would just, you know, we feel like we have to do this just to make sure if that's the path we go down, we have the room, but based on the advice of counsel, you know, we still have to have that discussion internally.
My request is not now, but at the next meeting, can we open with that? Because there are some critical dates coming up in September, and we would rather not wait until October 13th to have a decision on that, you know, under what we're proceeding under, whether it's 40R or 40S?
Oh, no, we would let you know prior to that. There's no reason why it would take us a long time to do that.
So potentially at the next meeting in two weeks, that would give you the time?
Yeah, I would think.
Okay. Is that?
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got to keep the non-lawyers happy, too.
There you go.
Okay, okay. So, just from a timing perspective and for us to file a written extension and everything else, you do have a written extension from us until the 16th right now on file. Technically, we had previously extended till the 2nd, till tomorrow. Do you guys want to vote to accept the extension till the 16th? Get it in and in the record, and in the meantime, we'll go get all the paperwork signed and get it submitted? Or if you agree that it's?
Well, here's what I, I think if you, we can do what we can do in two pieces. We can accept the already submitted extension to the 16th, and then we can, we can accept your further extension to the 13th contingent upon receiving it in writing.
Okay.
So, just to be safe, why don't we have two separate motions? Is, does somebody want to make a motion to accept the written extension to, that's already received to September 16th?
So moved.
Okay, motion made and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to accept the further written extension, the further extension to October 30th?
October 20.
October 13th, October 13th, pending receipt of that. Yeah, okay, motion made and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you for standing. I appreciate it.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't want to. Pete? Give us the 30 second. How's the water jet doing?
Still working with Julie on putting together the data, and I think we'll have something good to look at.
Okay.
And by the way, by the way, for the last three or four months, I've been picking up trash in the lake, tires, tire rims.
From the trash truck that happened.
Rotting docks, and I found last weekend the inevitable piece of junk, the kitchen sink.
Yeah.
I kid you not.
Somebody threw their kitchen sink in there?
Yes.
What happened with the trash truck that fell in the lake?
Actually, that's a good question. Would we ever get the result of the investigation of what happened to that? I mean, we have an interest in the water quality.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see if it had any impact. I mean, it's obviously what happened, it's a question of what impact it had.
Was there an investigation being done by state police on that? On the cause?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, yeah. Hey, Tom?
Okay, let's.
Again, I don't want to create any sort of awkwardness in this, but I feel like there's a piece of this that whether, not necessarily tonight, but at some point in time, should be under executive session or client attorney privilege if it's in writing.
What?
Related to this whole thing about what our choices between the two options and other things.
There's still an open mic, man.
Yeah, I know. But I feel, well, you know, I mean, or maybe we say nothing, I don't know. Tell me, tell me what we should do here.
I talked about whether executive session's appropriate. I'll be around tomorrow if you want to call. I mean, I'll be quite honest, at the top of my head, I don't see any grounds for executive session here. I mean, if the issue is whether it's a site plan approval or special permit? I mean, if the issue is whether it's a site plan approval or special permit, I mean, that's something we can talk about.
That's something that should be, we can't talk about in public?
Yeah, I think so. I don't see any.
Can you, you know, I mean, I'm going to go off and read some of the stuff and form my own impression, but you, can you, can you put, you know, put a little bit of thought into that from your perspective?
Well, yeah. The application came in, I don't have it in front of me, but it came in, it didn't specify site plan or didn't specify special permit. Is that correct, Christine?
That's plan approval.
Yeah, it just said plan approval. And then there was, you know, discussion during the course of the last few months whether it was special permit or site plan. I think, again, the devil's in the details with regard to the zoning board decision, but I was here at the meeting and from what I understand, they did, and we'll have to see it in writing, but if my understanding is correct, as to how it's read, how it reads in the actual decision, which is supposed to be filed by next Tuesday, I think it took it out of the special permit category because it put it into a category of an allowed use, which triggers the 17.3.3, I believe, off the top of my head, is the site plan approval procedure under, under the bylaw. So it wouldn't be a special permit type of hearing. It would be a site plan approval type of hearing, which, you know, you folks do all the time.
Okay, yeah, I mean, there were some pieces of what he said. I understand where he's coming from. I'm not sure I agree 100% with the interpretation, even if you go down that path, but I understand where he's coming from, but.
Well, yeah, and based upon, and based upon what the, again, seeing, seeing the exact language of the zoning board decision, but based upon my understanding of it as to what they did, I think it took it out of the special permit category and put it as a site plan approval.
At a minimum, we have to see what they come up with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the answers to their questions, I think, would, would answer, answer that. They answered affirmatively on the five planning requests that were made as to whether the building inspector aired in certain interpretations. But again, once we see the decision, that'll hopefully nail it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Did you enjoy yourself tonight?
Well, we don't, well, I've heard this, I heard this last Tuesday, so.
So you're an expert on these things?
Well, no, I wouldn't say that.
Yeah, so you were, you used to be a cell tower expert, now you're a solar expert.
Well, I saw, I saw Terry Rosen's letter reciting all these cell, or some cell tower cases.
Yeah, it seemed kind of familiar. Yeah, I've been there before, so.
Preaching to the choir here, or some of you unfortunately who have the scars of some of that experience.
So, everybody ready to roll? Does anybody want to make a motion to adjourn? I'm tired.
Well, I think we have one thing we might have to discuss, 777 Great Pond Road. The letter, is that something that they've been getting notices from us on, or?
I, I had, I'm just going to show this to you real quick. This is 777 Great Pond Road, and I had, they.
That's the same one we're rolling.
This was one of those ones where they did, they, they cut all the vegetation that you see there, and they are going to fill in and get rid of the pool, and they're obviously very close to the wetland. It's a wetland resource, so it's, it's very close to the wetland resource. He sent you a letter, and I forward that to you, that he argued, you know, their mind said that they do not need a watershed permit for.
Which I likely agree with, but I disagree that they don't have to come in front of the board, because the, just, I gave to everybody the little quick sheet. They still have to do best management practices as set by the planning board, even in the non-discharge zone. The non-disturbance zone, yes, they did a special permit, but the non-discharge zone, they still need to come in front of the board, so.
Now, where is this?
It's Great Pond Road.
This is Great Pond Road. After you go past Rolling Ridge, before you get to the turnoff to 133. And that body of water that you see in the upper right, that drains underneath Great Pond, and if you go above the photo, that's the lake. So that's within a couple, few hundred feet of the shore of the lake. But the issue here is not the shore of the lake, it's the proximity to the wetland that connects to the lake.
Right, and so you would, that you run afoul of the watershed stuff for that, too, don't you?
Yes.
So what do you want to do, Lynn?
Well, if, I just don't want the applicant to have to wait two weeks to find out they have to come in front of us. So I believe that it requires best management practices as set by the planning board in the non-discharge zone.
So, do we want them to come in?
Well, I don't know what else they wanted to do. The letter was unclear. It didn't say, it said they already did work, which is one thing, we can deal with that any time, but if they want to do further work, they definitely have to come in front of us.
That's the one thing I did ask. They're going for the Conservation Commission for some activities that they're doing, and so the Conservation Commission is reviewing this where it falls in their jurisdiction. We've asked, okay, are they building any, anything? Is anything new happening besides the vegetation removal that would trigger that permit? And they said nothing.
The vegetation removal does trigger them coming to us. It doesn't not trigger a special, a watershed special permit. There's two different, that's the problem, there's two different parts of that. It's not very simple.
So would you like him to, I can reach out to this person and have them come in to your next meeting?
Best bet is to do that, yes.
Because they even put cutting trees in the non-discharge zone. They should have had erosion control, because that is best management practices in a watershed to not have large equipment and dug up earth going into the lake.
Yeah, okay.
So, does that answer you?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, so that's one. Other than that, we can hold everything else over.
And I have one minor question for you guys to review. It's, somebody is doing a reciting of a project in the downtown, and it's, it's just reciting, but I brought in the panels just in case the board wanted to review them. It doesn't technically trigger site plan review because it's not changing gross floor area, but it's a large building, and they're, they're changing the siding and windows. So I didn't know if you wanted to take a quick look at it before you left.
I mean, I always have a personal opinion, but I don't think it's within our jurisdiction.
It was, it was, some of these ones being that I'm.
Unless it was subject to a site plan review in the past, in that we conditioned with any changes, if it wasn't something that was ever subject to site plan review before.
We can't find the site plan. So it was in 1987. We've exhausted all efforts to look for the 1987.
Okay, why don't you send me the address and I'll look online?
Yeah, because we can always come back and deal with that later.
Why don't you, I'm pretty good with the registry. Just send me the address and I'll check before.
Yeah, okay. You'll be our czar of taste. How's that?
Because sometimes it's recorded and not registered.
Where's the building? Where's the building? It's 231 Sutton. You can, you can look as you're walking out or whatever. It's a mile, like I said, it's, it didn't necessarily trigger site plan, but I wanted to bring it before you today in case you had any last thoughts.
Good. Okay, anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Okay.